Testing, testing. Oh yeah, you are recording already. And then, yeah, Matthew, can you unmute yourself and test? Because I don't think we have the volume up on here. Or Wendy, can you unmute?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Testing, is this working?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Hello? Who, I hear that you're probably talking, Wendy. Okay. Scroll up to the.
Yeah, I think I, I hear, I heard Matthew pipe up.
Okay, Wendy or Matthew, can you try again?
Testing.
All right, sweet. Yep, that's it. Thanks, Matthew.
Right. It is 6:01 PM and I will bring this regular meeting of the Dunsmere City Council into session. If everyone could please stand for the flag salute.
The United States of America.
And just for the record, this is the meeting for January 16th, 2025. All right, with that, we will move on to roll call.
Councilmember Brian.
Present.
Councilmember Lucchese.
Councilmember Lucchese has an excused absence this evening.
Very good. Councilmember Sebring.
Present.
And Councilmember Hubbard.
Present.
And Mayor Clernow.
Here. All right, with that, we do not have any special presentations or announcements tonight. So we will go straight into public comment. This is a time for any member of the public to make a statement. Everyone will have three minutes. I will give a 30 second warning when your time is almost up. We do ask that you, you so choose, start off with your name and address. If you do choose to state your name and address, I will not count that towards your time as long as you do it within the first sentence or two. And we'll do individuals in person first, then followed by Zoom. If you do have comments for anything under item 10 or item number 11, I do ask that you hold your comments for those items until that particular time as they will have dedicated public comment. And with that, I will open up public comment for this evening.
Dwight Bailey, 5603, Castle Avenue. I'm more of a point of information. I'm looking here at the website. And on January 7th, last Tuesday, it is scheduled on there that there was a city council meeting. The agenda was never posted, nor was there a minute in this meeting.
I will address that when we get to. Any other?
That is my only public comment.
Thank you. All right.
Hi, good evening. Hope everybody had a good holiday. My name is Debbie Spagnolo. I live at 4120 Edith Street here in Dunsmere for the past 38 years.
Debbie, if you'd like to wait until the train finishes going by so we can hear you. I'll let you, I'll give you a second here for the train to stop.
Take it off my time? Yes, no, go.
We should be good now.
I presented myself in front of you, all of you, council, city manager, attorneys. For the past year from February, March of 2020 somehow to get through to you. And, and all the residents of Dunsmere as well. The words and message I give are in truth and fact, like always. You need to hear, listen, and see me. Treat me with respect. That's your job. I've been disrespected, disrespected basically by, and made a fool of by the city attorney, Mr. Kenny. His neglectful, his neglectful actions that I requested public records on Mark Allen from 2019 to present was done in August of 2024. And in November, I received only two documents. I requested to be on the agenda since February, March of 2024 with faxed documents and proof in regards to Mark Allen's illegal acts justified by city manager Dustin, again, being disrespected, never a return call, no professionalism, ignored, and basically nothing. My health has been jeopardized by these acts of non-compliance and illegal moves. I have enough to deal with on my plate with the newbie neighbors who lie without a blink of an eye and have hurt me more than anyone knows in all areas, just as you have. Procedure, procedure, step by step. I've looked them all up. Is not what you do. And you don't, is to be done and followed properly and legally, not what you do. In which is what you do, do is look the other way. All you do to do is to promote a, to promote what's supposedly mandated and ignore all else of importance to town and residents. They also help pay your way. I've started legal measures. I would have been doing this sooner, but I've had funeral and some other health issues and some of the things go on. And I'm really frustrated with this because I don't know what else to do. My health is more important. In fact, I have an engagement to go to pretty soon here. So I won't be staying for the rest of the meeting. And to you newbie council, no offense, please don't take offense to that. You never came to one meeting last year. I hope you can possibly see what's going on. I really do hope you open your eyes and look at it. And I just want to close this by saying, remember this, and remember this citizens, I am not a quitter. And I will continue till I get an answer and get some results. Thank you. I have to leave now. Thank you.
Thank you. Should have made that comment. Give me a minute and let's go through the rest of the public comment.
Okay, Quentin Gaddy, Director of the Small Business Development Center, Shasta Cascade. Just want to make announcement, first and third Wednesday or Fridays, which is tomorrow, the SBDC hosts open office hours at the Dunsmere Chamber of Commerce. Just to fill in the new council members, what we are, we're part of a nationwide program funded by the US Small Business Administration. We help entrepreneurs start and grow their small businesses at no cost. So we don't charge them for advising. We help them on everything from business plans to business loans, marketing assistance. Just this last month, we helped a Dunsmere business secure a targeted brownfield assessment grant from the EPA. It's going to help them do an environmental assessment so they can purchase their building with debt financing from a bank. It's an SBA requirement. And so we try to make sure that folks know about us so they utilize our services. We have full-time offices in Reading and Wyreka. We know that's hard to get to for Dunsmere residents. And so we've been doing this for a few months now. We'll be there tomorrow. The other thing that I'd like to note on sort of a different thing is I took a Brown Act training today. And there was interesting rulings in there on the teleconferencing rules. That is interesting with Councilman Brian being on Zoom. From what I gathered from the training is that his address is also supposed to be agendized. And where he's at, supposed to be open to the public to attend as well. So just an interesting note that I took from my training today. So I didn't know if it applies to cities or whatnot. So thank you.
Three minutes, I think I can do it. John Palmer, 6205 Hill Street. Formulas, I would like to see parking allowed on Hill Street during snow. For over 20 years, it's not been a problem. And that's been verified by talking with the snowpot drivers. And it would relieve some pressure on the downtown parking. Second thing I would like to see is some sort of an email, like newsletter that would go out to everybody and we're all on the city water. Just for the calendar, what's, what's coming up, just to keep people informed. And we can go on the website, but that means we have to go on the forum. I just think would be very friendly and very handy to have. Service.
Thank you. All right, is there any other public comment on Zoom? I do see someone with their hand raised.
Good evening. My name is Alan Magagna, 416 Pine Street. Good evening, honorable members of Dunsmere City Council. I want to start by expressing my sincere gratitude for all that you do to make our community thrive. As the owner of Al's Deep and Emporium, I'm proud to be part of this vibrant city. As you may or may not know, California law allows for onsite consumption of cannabis and licensed dispensaries, provided that local jurisdiction permit it. I believe that introducing onsite consumption in Dunsmere would not only enhance the customer experience, but also contribute to the local economy. I'm here tonight to ask for your guidance on how to bring this topic to the agenda for future discussion. What steps can I take to ensure that onsite consumption is considered in a timely and efficient manner? I understand that there may be some concerns into regulations to consider. I'm committed to working collaboratively with the city to address any issues and ensure that onsite consumption is implemented responsibly. Thank you again for your dedication to our community. I look forward to your guidance and to continued work together in our Dunsmere community to have an even better place to live, work, and visit it. And then I do have a second thing, if I may. I was hoping that we could move forward on the historic district management committee in regards to overseeing the building environment down in the historic district. And if we can move forward on that as well at a timely manner, that would be appreciated. Thank you guys so much.
All right, thank you. Any other further public comment? And I'm not going to allow that, but what I am planning on pulling that from consent so we can actually talk about as an agenda item. And you can make public comment at that time. So, all right. Unless there is any other further public comment this evening, I'm going to close public comment. All right. All right, with that, we'll move on to council and staff comments. It looks like Sergeant Ortiz has stepped out. So we'll start with you, City Manager Reeve.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council and Councilmember Brian online. We are just getting back in the groove of it after the holidays. We're just finally starting to get most of our storm recovery from the November storm cleaned up. Prospect Road restoration is in action. We're almost completed with that. Next week, we're going to begin some tree removal. Some of that's at Hedge Creek Park associated on the upper side there, associated with the, the project that we'll discuss later for the UV project. And then additionally, there'd be a number of trees down in the city park that we're going to remove due to some, some of them being dangerous, mostly oak trees. We have quite a few that are becoming issues. And then thank you to all of the, all the people who attended the Firewise meeting held by Stephen on Monday this week. I wasn't able to make it, but we, Stephen said we had about 25 people. And then other than that, I think everything else I have is on the agenda.
All right. Cool. Well, since Sergeant Ortiz is still not back, we'll jump into council comments. And then if he comes back around, we'll get his update. And we will start with Councilmember Brian on Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize for not being there in person. I'm on the tail end of a recovery from having evaded chickenpox for 24 years. It finally hit me. I'm well and in recovery, but I'm not quite up to my full strength. So I said attending remotely was more appropriate tonight. I don't have anything further, but look forward to the agenda tonight.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hubbard.
No comment at this time.
And Vice Mayor Sebring. All right, I'm going to keep mine pretty short as well. First off, I hope everyone enjoyed New Year's and holidays. I'm going to touch on a few pieces of public comment here while the train goes by. First off, in terms of the meeting on 1-7, we did not have a meeting on 1-7. I'm not sure why that's listed on the website. So the reason there's no agenda or anything like that for, or minutes is because that meeting didn't, yeah, doesn't exist or, yeah, and didn't happen. So we'll have to look into why that's listed on there. It was yeah, when they loaded everything up, it probably just was a mistype and something on there. So.
Didn't, oh, question. Did this one show up? Okay, good. All right.
Thanks. The next thing I wanted to just touch on is the teleconferencing rules. For the most part, that is correct on how the Brown Act works. There are a few exceptions that were put in place during COVID to allow individuals to join a remote meeting for certain circumstances where that, that doesn't have to be a public meeting space, such as this particular case. With that, I think that's all I've got for tonight. So we'll move on to the next item. And then if Sergeant Ortiz comes back, we'll give him an opportunity. We'll circle back around and give him the opportunity to give us that update. Oh, and I believe, or, no, nevermind, we're already past that. All right, with that, we'll move on to item number seven, approval of the minutes for December 19th, 2024. Like your motion to approve the minutes.
Approved?
No, you moved to approve, or you moved to approve the minutes.
I moved to approve the minutes.
Right, and I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye?
Aye.
Councilpeople, all right, minutes approved. All right, with that, we'll move on to item number eight, the consent agenda, which consists of three items today. Item number A, the check register for 121424 through 1102025. And B, appointment of local transportation delegate. And item number C, adoption of resolution authorized, authorizing the creation of municipal code review ad hoc committee. As I said during my comments, I, or as I said at the end of public comment, I moved that we pull item numbers, or I'd like to pull item number C and place it. I believe you've already talked about this before. So we'll move it to old business, item 10C. All right. And with that, do I hear a motion to approve consent agenda for items number A and B? I move that we approve the consent agenda for items number A and B, removing item C. Do I have a second? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Consent agenda approved. We do not have a public hearing tonight, so we'll move on to item number 10, old business. I, we have three items tonight. Start with item A, resolution 2024 dash 21, adoption of request for public schedule for contractual city services.
Mayor and Council, we had this on the last, the last meeting that we conducted. And you asked for a couple of clarifications. I believe it was the last bullet point in item three. And then additionally, I added police services on there for the sheriff's contract. And I held that at a three-year rotating term because that's about all they are willing to do. And other than that, I believe that's the, where the changes that were requested.
Right, let me just check here.
Oh, and I did confirm before I changed this, I did confirm city engineer, airport engineer, those contracts as well.
Okay.
The city engineer, we currently were under year-to-year. Airport engineer ends at the end of November this year. So I just kind of put it into 2026. Because we're, we will still be in a project for the airport. So I wanted to make sure that we held them on until that project closed out.
Okay.
And go through that process.
Are there any other contracts that we're currently in year-to-year that you're aware of?
Year-to-year.
Other than the, I know with the sheriff, we are.
Yeah, that one's year-to-year. Planning Services, we just signed. Most of those we just signed. Code enforcement attorney. The only thing I didn't have, I guess, oh, I meant to alter building cleaners. I was going to put that out right now. And I'll just do a two-year on that. So I can add it in 2025 and then we can leave it at 27 and 31, if that's okay.
Okay. Are there any other clarifying questions from councils?
No.
No.
Councilmember Brian has dropped from the meeting. We'll give him a second to come back.
Technically, I think, I remember.
He was, he was the one that requested the tabling or the alterations.
Plus, if I remember correctly, while we're waiting for him to unmute himself and everything, I believe the rules are if someone is teleconferencing and they drop from the meeting, we have to give them some time to rejoin.
I don't remember that specifically.
I missed a second.
Yep. We're good. We, we paused for you once we saw you dropped. In fact, I was just asking if you had any clarifying questions before.
I do not, no. I missed literally like five seconds.
All right, with that, I will open up this item to public comment. If anyone has any public comment relating specifically to this item, you're more than welcome to come up. Same rules as general public comment, three minutes and I will give a 30 second warning. And if you are online on Zoom, please signify that you would like to make a comment by raising, going to the reaction stab and raising your hand. All right, and seeing no one, I will close public comment on this item. And move into discussion. I think this is pretty good. I like the fact that we're moving into a more structured, structured layout where we can just reference this whenever we want and just updated it every five, six years. I'm pretty happy with this. Other than, if you feel like we need to move cleaning services up, I'm more than happy.
Yeah, and the only, I, I'm not sure why I overlooked that one, but we, I currently have an interim cleaner because Becky has, has passed. So we want to, I want to put that out now and then I'll just, we'll re-entertain it again in 2027.
All right, is there any other further discussion on this? I move that we approve the consent agenda with the one change of moving building cleaning services, RFP to be this year, 2025. Is there anyone who would like to second that? All right, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right. Resolution passes. And we'll move on to
Right on back to.
Oh, yep, Sheriff, Sergeant Ortiz is here. So we'll get our, the sheriff's update.
For December 2024, the city of Dunsmere has contracted for 5,000 square meters of control left. 2023, 2024 fiscal year. This date, 2072 hours completed, 42% of the fiscal year to complete, 39% of the contract hours have been completed. That being said, we had a number of employees out that have not completed their teaching or hiring.
Good.
Yeah.
I still have outstanding logs. I anticipate the, the hour served to draw closer to the percent of the year that actually kind of freaked out a little bit. I've never been behind. So. But I, I think that should be sobered up when I get those logs. There were 201 calls for service and/or self-initiated activity. And 10 cases were pulled in the city of various reasons. Nothing too amazing happened. We were proud to help out with the Christmas tree lighting and menorah lighting and our visit with Santa Claus for the holiday celebration here in town. That's all we have to report.
Yeah, and thank you for, thank you for being the light, the candles in the canyon. All right, with that, we'll move on to item number 10B, downtown revitalizations priorities discussion.
All right, Mayor and Council, we have been working on the downtown revitalization project for about 18 months now. We conducted a community survey and that was presented back in November. And I have Ken here and, and Robert Valente back on Zoom again to kind of facilitate the discussion and so the council can prioritize actions based on what the survey presented. I did provide a copy of the original or the, what the survey was in the packet. And so we can kind of go from there. So Ken or Bobby? Go ahead.
And Bobby, do you want to, this is Ken here, a mayor and members of the council. Bobby, do you want to go and just give a quick overview relative to the survey and how that ties back into the revitalization strategy so that council can, you know, discuss, deliberate on priorities?
Yeah, I can give a very brief, you know, a few minute overview here on the survey. So again, our downtown revitalization strategy, we've been working on for about 18 months. It provided the basis for those survey questions. It's based on this work that we've been working on and research that we've been conducting. So again, the survey was conducted between July and September. We used both an online survey tool as well as paper surveys. We received about 169 surveys from residents, business owners, et cetera. We really focused on three main questions. The first question looked at some key themes regarding economic development with the highest priority ones being improving the downtown business environment, small business assistance and entrepreneurship, and leveraging that natural recreation and tourism. Those are really the, the key themes there. The next question looked at 10 action items. Those action items again were really the, the, some of the main categories of the strategy from our, our strategy document. And from there, we see you know, a majority of respondents ranking every category at least high or highest. But the top ranking ones being pursuing grant funding, fostering entrepreneurship and helping small businesses, evaluating financing strategies, encouraging and attracting private investment, marketing Dunsmere, investing in infrastructure. So those are some of the key, you know, top ranked action items. And then finally, we have some implementation next steps that we highlighted in our presentation of the strategy to city council last year. And those really fell under, under five main categories. So again, we asked respondents to, to rank those. Each of the categories received at least two-thirds of respondents saying higher, highest. So again, pretty broad support. But the top implementation next steps really being business expansion, attraction, retention, efforts, infrastructure improvement efforts and property owner collaboration and project shaping being the key categories there. We also received a variety of written comments from respondents, really centering around a few key themes like, you know, improving the streetscape downtown and dealing with vacant storefronts, business incentives and support to encourage business activity, economic development initiatives, tourism and hospitality initiatives, initiatives, and an emphasis on, on collaboration between all sorts of stakeholders, the communities, city officials, et cetera. So with that, you know, really looking for some next steps, you know, I think kind of synthesizing some of those results from the survey and, and just thinking through a few potential next steps here. Something that I, we had highlighted last month when we, when we presented as well were these key themes, you know, focusing on improving the streetscape, things like facade improvement programs and other programs that can help businesses and property owners improve their spaces. Business expansion, attraction and retention activities, what we call bear activities. That can run the gamut for a, a number of different actions here moving forward. It could mean, as Quentin. Um, that can run the gamut for a a number of different um actions here moving forward. It could mean uh as Quentin uh spoke to earlier in this meeting, leveraging resources like the SBDC to provide to connect businesses and small business owners with these resources that can help them analyze and and market opportunities. Uh, it can mean checking in with existing businesses, connecting them with resources, conducting some marketing exercises and and preparing marketing material that highlights the city and some specific opportunities in the city, conducting outreach to developers, retailers, brokers about uh opportunities in the city and collaborating with businesses, industry groups, other uh governmental entities. Um, regulatory reform efforts that can help foster a business friendly environment. And then, you know, one other ki- I think key category that I point to is also the the concept of property owner outreach and project shaping. So really working with the city, working with property owners, working with developers and investors. Uh, this is something that we work uh with a number of cities on, you know, interacting with these different entities, learning about barriers to projects, learning about opportunities and helping to find strategies to get to yes and to move projects along, move them uh to fruition. I'll turn it over to Ken uh here as well from Cosmont um for for his insights.
Yeah, I just want to add a perspective on our effort as we started this um dating back to twenty twenty three. We did a a pretty robust amount of analytical work. We came to the city. We had some community meetings, of course, and stakeholder outreach. I think we got to the point where the community outreach and surveying be became a priority for council. Hey, really important to make sure that we capture as many folks as we can. So um, we have the results of this survey, which I think are very important in guiding some of the decision making by leadership. We find ourselves at Cosmont Companies um to be in a position where we want to help the city, help you all try to implement some of these. So we we're kind of in the action uh stage and I think marketing, as Bobby mentioned, um, some outreach, some collaboration, working with property owners, working with Siskiyou Economic Development to really advance the ball with certain projects. And uh so we're ready to do that. We just this is an opportunity, obviously, for council, now that you've got the results of the survey, to go ahead and and give some direction to staff and to us so that we can implement uh during this calendar year for you all.
Right, um. I'm gonna start off here with a statement and question here. So first off, um, for everyone who's in the audience who might be unaware, um, we're currently paying for Cosmont to help the city uh do downtown by revitalization uh through a grant that we received in twenty twenty two.
Twenty twenty three. And then we, I think it started in twenty twenty three. We put out an RFP. We awarded the RFP in in like July of twenty three.
Okay.
And so I think the end of the grant cycle is at the end of this year.
Okay, so yeah, and that grant um was for a set amount of time and a set amount of money, and that was going to be my first question. How much time and money and how much more assistance uh can we count on? Because I would really like to see, I mean, they've done a great job with the the analysis and the plan and getting, you know, getting us information, but I'd really like.
We so from the grant standpoint, we still have some remaining dollars that that we didn't spend last year. Um, the original budget was for fifty thousand per year once after the first year. The first year was pretty much the whole everything associated with uh getting the the plan developed. And so um we we should, I I don't remember exactly. Blake's not here to to ask, but I I want to say we're between sixteen and seventy thousand for this fiscal year.
Okay, and we are talking fiscal year.
Well, I mean, not for this calendar year. So we would have, so through the end of this year, Cosmont's contracted through December thirty first.
Okay.
But Cosmont doesn't necessarily go away. It's just the grant funding goes away. So that that can be a decision that we maybe want to make later later on and see where we're at.
Okay.
Um, and it might be on a project based kind of, you know, since we already have a relationship, it could be a project based kind of aspect.
And then I think it was in here, but do you know roughly how many um, oh, they're right there, survey response.
It's on the.
Yeah.
Page twenty three.
Huh?
Hundred and.
Sixty nine.
Fifty.
Yeah. Yeah, hundred and sixty nine respondents, which is quite good. Um, so.
It's almost ten percent.
Yeah, which is a lot higher for anyone who uh knows about how much response you usually get from citizenry when you put this kind of stuff out. Ten percent is quite good. Um, on that note, I am pretty, I am inclined to agree a lot with uh um how the citizens put out. But does anyone else have any questions um before we move into public comment for either the city manager or Cosmont? Matthew, you got anything?
Uh, no, thank you.
All right. All right, with that, I will open this up to public. Oh, we do have, or with that, I will open this up to public comment. Um, we'll do people in the room first followed by Zoom. I do see that we have someone on Zoom who's already wanting to speak. Is there anyone in the room who'd like to make public comment?
Uh, Quentin Gaddy, Director of Business Development at Siskiyou Economic Development Council. Um, been involved with a lot of aspects of this project from the beginning, uh, worked with Cosmont on other projects as well. Um, one thing I would like to know from a professional perspective, um, working in economic development here locally is we do have a gap in the North State in capacity for the bear activities, the business expansion, attraction, retention activities. So I know, given the different, you know, survey responses, there are some resources that we can, you know, utilize locally um and some assets that that we should already rely on. Uh, but then there are also gaps in what we're what what we have locally and we're able to do and gaps that Cosmont can fill. And I think on that bear side particularly, uh, especially that recruitment side, being able to find prospective investors, commercial property investors, businesses who could look at Dunsmere and see this as an opportunity to see the momentum that's that's developed, you know, with the increase in restaurants and arts activities downtown. Uh, someone who can see, you know, what could be and is worthwhile in terms of investing, you know, whether it be the Travelers Building or some of the other key institutions. So uh just from a professional perspective, we think that would be a very strong use of the resources available um and their expertise to kind of go after um that type of activity and prioritize that. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in person? All right, seeing no one, we'll move, oh.
Boy Bailey, fifty nine oh six Castle Avenue again. In your report here, it talks about in your re research, you need got comments back towards a couple of buildings here named the theater and the Dunsmere Hotel. I'm kind of concerned. What do you looked into at the Travelers Hotel? The planning commission gave a permit or the the city's given them a permit that will live for three, two, three years. The planning commission reviewed that. We were told by the state of California that once a major plan is established, that we have to let them go at least six more, six years. Uh, it's been about two years since we gave them the two or the three year extension. What is your feeling on that particular building and the relationship with the state law, I guess? Be the question that I'm asking.
Cool. All right, and I'll let them touch on that when we get uh through with public comment. Um, all right, and with that, we'll move on to Ms. Luchewski.
Thank you, Mayor Allison Luchewski, five three three four River Avenue. I I just think that this is um a really embarrassing to have to review this report again. You know, this has been an agenda item. This has been a special presentation. Um, any older council members should should know this report quite well. And any new ones should have reviewed it. This was a two hundred thousand dollar project here. That's that's the amount. I spoke about this in twenty twenty three when this project was done. They they did robust analytical work. That's what was just told to us. It it was a PowerPoint presentation of pictures of dilapidated buildings and suggestions and a survey that could have been done internally. Twenty twenty three. Are we just kick kicking the can down down the road here? I I really don't understand. Uh, did we invite Cosmont to this uh meeting to light a fire under everyone's ass here? What what do we do now? That gentleman was correct in what he said in that this report is to guide leadership to make informed decisions. So let's do it. This this has been out for a long time when I made the original public comment on spending two hundred thousand dollars on robust analytical work of a PowerPoint presentation. I think I suggested I could do it for a hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars. Go around and take pictures of a building and make suggestions. Now is the opportunity for direction. Now is the opportunity to create milestones, not just discuss priorities. What are we gonna do? And in three months, have we done it? In six months, have we have we crossed the next milestone? What can we do to prove to ourselves and our town that we are not just talking about talk here? I'd like to really see some action. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any other further public comment? All right, uh, seeing none, I will close public comment on this item. And um would you like to address uh the public comment on the travelers and that uh permit and that project?
I can. Um, that, I mean, the the building recently sold. It closed last week, so I do have a meeting with the building owner um next week and the building official. And so the details of that, we are so I I will have more details next week, but I literally just had contact from him yesterday, so.
All right, um, we'll just move into council discussion here. Uh, personally, uh, Allison, I completely agree with you, and that is one of the main points of this meeting is to get this moving and try to use some of this grant money that we still have to achieve goals. Um, and with that, uh, as I've said, with the survey, what I said before, uh, I'm pretty happy with the priorities that came forward in the survey. They match um what I kind of felt we should be personally uh doing as well out of the couple of um parts of the plan that Cosmont had identified. Uh, is there anyone who disagrees with uh the pri disagrees with the priorities or thinks we should be prioritizing um different parts of the plan?
I have a I have a few comments on that. So when I look at, so page twenty four of the of the survey.
Mm hmm.
Um, is kind of the first section of where we received some co, you know, mm hmm, community input, right? Improving downtown business environment, small business assistance and entrepreneurship. And I just take it on top three, leveraging natural recreation tourism. Those are kind of the ones that we can control the most, uh workforce development, um due to a capacity and size of the community we are. Workforce development is very challenging. Um, that's uh, that's something that we work at through a regional aspect and through uh, you know, like through the SEDC and also through other organizations. So it's not something that as a community, I don't think spending our resources on workforce development is is appropriate outside of um my time spent at uh onboard meetings and and guiding that from a different way rather than actual resources from the community. But I think the top three are very important. Um, and if I would prioritize them from my perspective as a city manager, um, I believe small business assistance and entrepreneurship. Um, I believe SEDC's partnership with the city has has covered that and they're meeting those goals already. Um, I believe Quentin has met with every single business owner in this community at least once, if not ten times. Um, with all of the COVID money and everything that we had going on up until um, we'd recently just closed those out. I think we're doing a really the best job we possibly can. Um, and sometimes the requirements on that make it tough for people to qualify. So there are challenges, but that's part of the cost of doing business. So if I was gonna say that that the top two I would put as tourism and recreation and uh and downtown business environment. Um, later on in the council meeting, and we discussed some goals for the budget standpoint. And what I did bring forward in there was like, how do we address regulatory burdens, which is a lot of what we've heard? I've kind of, I presented a a program for um kind of addressing some of the downtown issues. Some of that's associated with facade improvement, reducing the burden of the the cost for building uh for the um building permits and um planning planning applications for anything associated in historic district. And so um I think that helps, but you know, I'd like to hear council's direction on those and leveraging to nat natural recreation, I think, is is our biggest goal to uh get more, get more tourism and more ra revenue for the community to improve it.
Okay, Matthew, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, yeah, I do. I agree with um our city manager in principle that of the top three, uh, we're we're most far along in small business assistance and entrepreneurship. Uh, that doesn't mean that it's the environment we'd like for them to have uh in town. We certainly need it to be uh busier and more vibrant. Um, to that effect, I would like to see a lot of the downtown improvement efforts be developed through the lens of establishing a business improvement district. I think that that uh might be the correct route to take. And I think while we have Cosmont on board, uh, some degree of analysis for that, maybe getting the ball rolling on on something like that that could encompass these improvements and projects um might be the way to organize it. And then I do think we have not, in my time here, had a coherent marketing effort. Um, not that it's the city's job alone to develop that message and pay for it, but I do think um some serious work towards marketing our city and defining ourselves uh could go a long way. As far as the hours spent left, you know, we only have so much time left, I would like to see business recruitment from Cosmont and um helping us develop a business improvement district. But I'd love to, at the end of this this year, say, hey, there's these three businesses that Cosmont or developers that Cosmont connected, helped helped us find the right partners and um led to some permanent improvements for us. That would be where I'd like to see a lot of this go based on our plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ken or Bobby, if you wouldn't mind, I know you talked to us um at one of the prior meetings about a business improvement district. Uh, but just for anyone who wasn't at one of those meetings, would you mind, uh, just since uh council member Brian mentioned that, would you mind going over what exactly a business improvement district is? Uh, because one thing I like about it is that could allow ways to continual of improvements even after your uh your grant uh runs out. So if you wouldn't mind, uh, one of you could just kind of touch on that for just a minute.
Yeah, I can give sort of a high level reaction to it. Just to clarify, uh, the business improvement district would, you know, account for the businesses, let's just say, in the downtown as defined. There's also the concept of a property business improvement district, which would be the owners of the real estate within that defined area. The key to this to an exercise of creating a um improvement district, the businesses or property owners is for them to come to the table and for the collaboration to take place because essentially they're investing in that P bid or bid, as we call it. And so I I appreciate the idea of trying to organize that and pursue that because it's a way to invest and have co-investors and have um vested parties within the downtown, you know, contribute to the improvement of downtown. I also, I think coupled with that in in Councilman Brian's comments, appreciate the idea of some marketing because I think as part of our implementation, and we're eager to do that for you all. Um, I really think that we should make marketing a marketing effort, and that's that will achieve some of this business attraction and investor attraction. Um, so we're kind of eager to get going on those fronts. Um, think about a business improvement or a property business improvement district and and some real marketing efforts. We have some ideas about that, so we'd like to get going on implementation. I also think the goals. I also think the goals of this calendar year, I appreciate. I think there's over $80,000, you know, remaining. So we haven't spent $200,000 on what we've done. So, you know, we're, and the monies, grant monies. So we are eager to try to apply as much as our skill set can apply to the goals for this calendar year.
Thank you, Ken. Yeah, thank you. So with the understanding that the small business assistance and entrepreneurship is going to kind of continue along with the hard work that's already being done. Then obviously if you see any ways that you can help with that, for you guys to jump in, but kind of focusing on a little bit of the downtown business environment and leveraging natural recreation and tourism. Other than kind of a few of the things we've already touched on in this meeting, is there anything else that you feel is either really important for you to take on or us to take on as we're setting priorities and moving into implementation?
Yeah, I mean, I think we've talked a lot about it. I appreciated the caller's comments as well about getting going on the implementation. I could envision, and I would like to set this ASAP, a meeting with Siskiyou Economic Development. Love to have a meeting with Quentin and city manager and really dig in and, and get going on some of this. I could also see us on a periodic basis, coming back to council to be able to provide some updates during this year, whether it's quarterly, mid-year, certainly by the end of the year. But I think prior to that, we're gonna, we're gonna want to have communication on these efforts.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. That is one thing I think we owe owe the community is to have some regular updates on how the implementation is progressing. So I think we can probably just discuss what kind of timeframe we'd like to have based around updates as we start rolling this out and probably get in on a meeting here in a couple of months potentially.
Yeah, I, I can discuss it. I'm kind of, my thought is let's, let's look at end of April or the second meeting of April and then that'd be about 90 day, about 90 days from now. And then, because that'll give, give myself and Cosmont and and SEDC some time to kind of swing the wagons. Okay, this is the direction we're going. We should have a very good grasp on it, if not already pushing forward with those projects, two aspects of the, what the council's looking at. And then and then probably again at the end of the summer, looking like August, September, probably. And then we do a closeout sometime, probably December meeting.
I know me, for me personally, I prefer August. Just off the top of my head, just so that way, if there is anything that needs to be adjusted or we have any, I'd like to kind of know that a little, I think council would appreciate knowing that a little earlier, I think as would the community. All right. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I'll make a few comments here. So I think Councilmember Brian hit the nail on the head. Couldn't agree more. We definitely need more communication and marketing when it comes to things like this. As far as prioritization, I'm a big proponent of business retention. For anybody who's been in this town for any length of time knows, we had multiple people, multiple businesses like Madalena's, St. Tong's that were staples. People came from out of town, brought a lot of money to the town. And now we've got a bunch of empty abandoned buildings. And so really prioritizing the businesses that are here that are been around for a long time and making sure they're taken care of would be a great first start. I don't think losing any more businesses would be of benefit to anyone. But communication and marketing could be huge as far as attracting businesses and bringing more people to the town. And that's all.
Good point. All right, with that, kind of what's the next steps in terms of motions necessary?
If I could interject briefly, I would like to see the development of maybe aspirational deliverables. But, you know, define what we're looking at, like the plan itself has a number of projects or properties that are selected that would have an outsized beneficial impact. Were they developed? I'm for, you know, putting efforts towards attracting people to develop all of them. But I would like before the next 90 days, maybe in the next 30 to 60 days to take these, you know, thoughts, direction from council and come up with what we're going to expect based upon them. And I know it's, it's, it's a world out there. We have to go fishing and find people that are a match for Dunsmere. But I'd like us to keep in mind what it is we're looking for so we can hold ourselves and you and everyone accountable to it.
So I, I do have some ideas on that, Councilmember Brian. Kind of my, my thought is I will set a meeting with SEDC and Cosmont in the next couple of weeks. And then what I would like to do is I would like to go after the property business improvement because I think that's an important one. And then we can get some action there and then we'll have some stakeholder meetings in the, with them. And that would be some action towards making that happen. I, I'm not sure, how long does that process typically take, Ken?
Well, it's a little bit hard to predict because it's going to require the cooperation of those property owners, Dustin. So we gotta get everybody in a room and there needs to be a majority. There needs to be sort of majority support. Because it's an assessment, you know, essentially it's an assessment on property value.
Yeah. Yeah. And so go ahead.
Oh no, go for it.
I, all I was gonna say was I, I, I understand that. And then, but I think that's a good, that, that we could make, I think I could make happen with a, with, with some sort of meeting for those stakeholders by probably mid-March. And that to me is, that would be a big check mark. And then we could provide that as a, as an update and moving forward. Another thing I think we could do is what I'd like to do with Cosmount is sit down from the marketing side and sit down with the Chamber of Commerce. And we do have a new executive director on board now. And then also discover Siskiyou and set, set that. And then there is Kate Springs has established a visit dunsmere.com. And I'd like to kind of get some input on the development of that and then kind of tie those three together to kind of see what we can do as a marketing plan sometime between now and March as well.
Oh, excellent ideas. Thank you. You did bring up a really good point. I would, I do agree full-heartedly that Kate Clover needs to be brought into this discussion as well over at the chamber. So.
Yeah, from, from a standpoint of stuff that internally that I can work on is some of the potentially some of the regulatory requirements that we have. I know we have on here the discussion about our next item is the discussion about downtown historic district. But also with a new planner on board, I mean, we may look at some, I can, I can engage her to look at possible text amendments that could help, help improve the business environment. You know, like less CUPs and more just, you know, ready to, you know, I want to do this business and let me do it. And I think that's some of the hurdles that get missed. And so from the regulatory side, I can engage, I can engage her as well to kind of help move that side along.
All right, anything else? All right, with that, I move, we move to focus on implementation of the plan focusing on the items that were discussed this evening. Is there a second? All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? All right, approved. All right, with that, we will move on to item number 10C, adoption of resolution offering the creation of the municipal code review ad hoc committee.
Okay, this is on page, page 12 and 13 of the packets.
And before we move on, thank you so much for being at the meeting today to provide us with information and engage in the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everyone. Look forward to collaborating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Mayor and Council. So we had, we had previously discussed this when we went through our appointments at the end of last, last calendar year, right before the holidays. And it was noted that we did not officially establish the municipal code review ad hoc committee. So I'm bringing forward a resolution to establish that. And then we can approve the appointments after establishment. I did not add the appointments to this meeting though.
Okay. One thing I'd like to talk a little bit about, and I'm sure Mr. Bailey is going to also agree on this, is a little bit of discussion on how this the workflow is going to go between this committee, the planning commission and the council as a whole and kind of the layout of those. I, I would like just a little bit more of a flushing out of that at the meeting as well tonight. I mean, I am 100% in support of this. I just think we need to kind of define that moving forward. And for those of you who are unaware of this, the main point of this committee is to look at some older ordinances. And some ordinances that are getting in the way of individuals and especially businesses downtown. For one example is that currently quite expensive if you want to repaint a building. And that is part of the ordinances. So looking at ways that we can say restructure that in terms of having some approved colors that you don't need to go through the full, full process. And if you come in, you choose one of the approved colors, you can just go right back out and pretty much paint the building. That's just the classic example that we've used throughout pretty much this entire process. And I know, correct me if I'm wrong, since it's been either almost a year or around a year since we started discussing this item, I believe. But the primary point of this, and they have met once, but it was held up because at the time we didn't have, we were using an interim planner. Now that we have a planner for, a planning firm that we've contracted with, this is something that the planning firm really needs to be involved in. So this process is pretty much restarting or starting again now that we have a permanent planning firm on board. But it was kind of discussed that council, there are a couple of council members in the city manager would meet along with probably the city planner as well now to identify some ordinances that the public has brought to them that are causing issues or that have been identified from city staff. So with that, I'm going to go back to my original question, just on kind of the workflow and how that is, all these, these three organizations are going to.
Right. So there, there's probably going to be two paths for workflow. So stuff associated with buildings and zoning and that kind of aspect will flow from this committee. They'll make their recommendation. And then we would take that to if it's, you know, most of what it is, is probably text amendments. It's not like full ordinance changes. We would take a text amendment like, for example, like the council's probably kind of already given some priorities associated with, with, you know, let's look at things like having a color palette, right? And so we'll go through that. That's one of the things on our list. We'll go through that with the city planner. Her and I'll work together. We will bring that forward to this committee, discuss it at the committee and say, hey, is this something we want to move forward? And then kind of get, because some of that stuff I need to make sure we can keep within budget. And so that's some of the stuff we'll, we can talk about in our, in our budget goals. But for this year, I still have some funding available. So we can, we can move some of it forward, just maybe not get it implemented completely until next, next, like, next budget, which is July. That's not too unreasonable from this point. We're already in basically at the end of January. And so then we would then if the council or the committee says, hey, we're going to focus on these three things. One of them is something associated with parking, but so that doesn't necessarily have to do with the planning commission. That's more of a council decision. So then that could just go straight to the, so that's kind of path two. So that would go to, from the committee to the council. Hey, our recommendation is to adjust parking here, 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 and here. And then we don't have to necessarily take that to planning commission because that's typically an implementation by myself and the public works director. But then like if we're gonna do stuff associated with the color palette, then it would go to planning commission. They would do the public hearings on that. Or, or they would make the recommendations for the public hearings. And then that would come to council for approval as a text amendment associated with what's, what's allowed and what's not allowed within the historic district. And so there's really two paths. It just depends on what the, what the code is looking to be changed. Most of those will, will probably engage either the attorney or the planner and, or maybe both.
Okay.
Depending on what they are. Is that, is that clear enough?
Yes. Yeah, perfect. Any other questions before we go to public comment? All right. With that, I will open this item up for public comment. Same rules as before, three minutes, 30 second warning. Please limit any particular comments to this particular item. And with that, I will open this up to public comment.
Do I bail again? 15906 Castle Avenue. What I have before me, and we've discussed this before, on January 11th, 1920, or 2024, this body formed this committee already. It was never listed. And an ad hoc committee by definition normally sets a goal. When that goal is finished, that terminates. Okay. The many of the whereas's in that are in this current proposal. Number one, I think to develop a new committee, you have to terminate the one before you form another one. This committee already exists. You said there were some technicalities. Again, my comment last year, when you developed this was Mr. Bailey is concerned that no citizens will be involved and that there will be, and if there are citizens involved, that they should have to file the 700 form, which is a conflict of interest. We do that, we do that. It was just do again. But the fact is, I believe that in addition, like changing codes, we need to know where that person sent in on there as a developer who's going to draw interest of it, whether he works for a real estate agency that's involved, et cetera, et cetera. These forms need to be there and they need to be there for a reason. I do like the fact that you're including in this particular one that the meetings will be addressed. They will be minutes made. I don't believe there's any minutes of anything that's been done over the last year or so. That is the concerns I have, that you have to destroy one, you should have to terminate one to start a new one or add to that and review that. At that time, as you know, immediately in the next meeting, the two people that were nominated were Matthew Bryan, Juliana, and the city manager. There were no citizens involved. That did disappoint me. This proposal you have, it listed that two members rotating in or out from the city council and a person named by the mayor. Okay, that, that's what's said in that the whereas's. Okay. It still seems to me like it's not involving the citizens. It's not involving the people that have some stake in it. In your discussion just now, we did discuss how the plan limitation would come. Again, I'm also concerned. You mentioned the painting. That has already been passed and has already been sent through to the planning commission. The planning commission does not set its own adjust, adjust agenda. That has been, the council has already made that motion. It has proceeded forward, but it has stopped. I tried to make during the last time we met as a body, I tried to implement how a member brings up that for the member, the meeting that we already had. I was told the only way to do that was to send an email to the city manager and that was the only way to do that. So I think that needs to be reinstated with this or without that.
Sounds good. Thank you. So is there any other further public comment? If you are on Zoom and would like to make a public comment, please go to the actions tab and raise your hand. Seeing none, I will close public comment on this item. And we'll move into council discussion. In terms of since this counter, since this committee does already exist. I know this does say resolution establishing.
This should supersede it.
This would supersede it.
Yeah. And we can make that as a part of the motion.
Motion, okay. Or would it be better to do it that way? Or would it be better if we are going to be assigning members to it at the next meeting? Or would it be better to do it that way? Or would it be better if we are gonna be assigning members to it at the next meeting to have? A separate item that basically dissolves the old one at that meeting.
It's by the same name, so really we're just changing the makeup and the rules.
Okay.
So we can just make them, when you make a motion, that would be something along the lines of. Make a motion to adopt resolution. Twenty twenty five dash oh two and then read the title. And that this, this resolution would supersede or the previous committee established on January eleventh, twenty twenty four.
Alright, um, do we have any other, do we have any discussion? Matthew?
No. I've been on the committee. We haven't met that many times, but I do think it needs to be organized this way to be more effective.
Okay. Alright, any other further discussion? Alright, well then I move that we approve. Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero two. With the understanding that this committee will supersede the previously created committee. With that, do I hear a second?
I second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Also, I sir.
Passes. Alright, we'll move on to item number eleven, new business. Item number, letter A, approval of public works radio purchases. Just speak loudly.
Alright, I'll come up here. My name is Stephen Decatur. I'm the resilient specialist for the city. So the, the request for the public radios comes before you. It comes as a direct result of the snowstorm that happened in November. Right after the snowstorm, we conducted an after action report with all city staff. So we brought all city staff in, in here for a meeting. A week, less than a week after the snowstorm to review what happened during the snowstorm. And after action report, they're designed to kind of review what worked, what didn't work. And how we can improve and learn from the event so that next time things run better. One of the big things that came up in that after action report was that we needed a different way to communicate. During, during the snowstorm. The way, the way that we had typically done it is with cell phones and if you're driving a snowplow and you get a call, you kind of have to stop. You can't respond to text messages. You can't read the text messages. It makes things very difficult to communicate. We do have a few radios at, at the present, but they're nearing the end of life. And they're also not necessarily compatible with, with what others have. So following that meeting, we identified that we really did need a radio communication method, a way to do that. We did meet with the Dunsmere Fire District with their radio specialist. He also works for Siskiyou County Office of Emergency Services, Adam Heilman. And we reviewed what, what we needed to, to be compatible with. The sheriff's office, the fire district to kind of work within the channels that they have. And what would be best for a small city such as us so that we would have that radio communication system. And then the, the quote that's in there is kind of the quote that Adam put together for us. As, as the best option for the city of Dunsmere with what we needed for them to function for. Now, this, this came about because of the, the snowstorm event, but these radios would be used in day to day operations as well. We do believe that it would streamline things a lot. It's a lot easier to have a radio in a vehicle and to have someone say something over the radio. Everyone hears it in their vehicle. It's not, you know, it's not a text message that you could easily miss or a phone call that you could miss. It would, I, we believe help communications a lot for the city. And so that's why this is before you today.
Alright, thank you. I do, we will have a few questions here for you. This item was originally on the consent agenda, it's sent to consent agenda during pre-agenda meeting. I moved this to a full item. To give councilmember Brian and myself the chance to ask a few questions on it because I know he would be interested in. Asking a few questions. Specifically so you understand why. Councilmember Brian and I working at the ski park, the ski park has fairly extensive radio network. We actually have a repeater, FCC licenses. Councilmember Brian, along with another individual, was actually in charge of. Part of that, or of the radio network up there. I've had a lot of involvement with as well. So we just wanted to make sure that a few things were addressed aware of that kind of information. So that all kind of launch into a few of these questions. Like the ski park where there are zones where radios will not. Work in direct communication with each other. Will be, will we be using any kind of repeater or using someone else's repeater such as if the fire department already has one?
We already have a repeater and we're actually discussing moving and it currently sits at the, the high school and we're gonna move it to the, to our tank. And is there another repeater in the north? No, okay. And that's typically our, our issue areas getting around from that side to this side.
Are cities assigned frequencies? Do we have them and how many? Or do we have to go out and purchase them?
No, we, we have frequencies. I believe we have three, right? Three that are assigned to public works and so we also can jump on the emergency side if we need, if we are in the emergency situation. But we will have that portion as scanning, but our, our channels, we, we do have three accessible for public works.
Okay, um, would it be possible for emergency planning to? Uh, maybe not so much the technical lines, whatever our main line is, uh, frequency. Make sure that the sheriff's department has that frequency in their database. So if the need arises, we can communicate seamlessly. And then.
Yeah, that, that is a part of the programming currently.
Oh, currently, yeah, I figured it was. And then I guess my only other real question is, Kenwood's tend to be a little bit more expensive. And they, they can last longer, although the technology, you know, is shifting slowly to, to digital. A lot of people would like it to go faster. I want to make sure that this model is compatible with digital frequencies. Or sorry, with digital radios, so that if we made that move in the next decade, it'd be compatible. I don't imagine we would, but. I was just curious about that. And then RCA makes a pretty dependable, you know, cheapest you could possibly get. That's still a real radio. I think it's the RCA twenty five. Did you guys compare that? I think it'd be a little bit, maybe about thirty percent less expensive.
We, we did not. So part of our challenge is that we need to make sure ours communicate and we have the programming available. So due to the programming. We already own the programming for the Kenwood radio systems because of the fire department and it is managed. Through OES, I believe. And so we can have all of our stuff programmed in-house and without adding any additional cost. Also, we did look at Motorola as the other primary one for emergency services. And they're substantially more expensive than Kenwood and Kenwood is the, the brand that we use for most of our fire operations, so.
And Motorola, despite being more expensive, also can have the old, well, certain models can have some reliability issues as well, so I was. Yeah.
Yeah, anyway, radios are really expensive. This is actually a pretty good deal.
Yeah, and I'm actually, you know, and as several of us have experienced grillings by Mr. Heilman. Once I learned it was him putting together this bid, I, I knew that we weren't going to be getting, or that we were gonna be getting a good deal, so. When anyone sees him, you know, please thank him for putting all this hard work together.
One, one more. I forgot to address your comment about digital. We did explore digital, but due to the nature of. The terrain and the current infrastructure and kind of the planning aspect of what that looks like. Our expectation is that we won't see any of those improvements here due to. Challenges with the train probably in the next decade, so. These, these radios will be near end of life by the time any of that stuff reaches us. There's just not the funding from the state that has pushed that. Because of, most of those digital networks are all in heavily populated areas and they have chosen to exclude the rural areas for any. Digital upgrades and so, which includes us in Siskiyou County.
Yeah, what, what's our? Distance with the repeater, is it about a half mile, mile? Or if we have two, I guess it's the whole town.
You can get to the airport, can't you?
I know off, off the repeater, I can hear conversation. I can hear conversations, but I can't transmit. From my house on the other side of Mount Shasta that goes on here and off our repeater. So I, I can't, like I said, I can't transmit back here, but I can hear the conversations go on. Through there, so coverage for our immediate area, Mount Shasta, the south end of Mount Shasta. And down to probably Craigview Drive, maybe a little bit of Castella. That is gonna be a very good coverage area for us.
Alright. Oh, go ahead.
I'm another request. Make sure you guys, um, imageurize them and keep track of them. Maybe sign out. In my experience, these things grow legs really fast.
And then. Just double checking, I assume so, but the, the repeater, it's the same repeater. There's just one for us in the fire department, correct? Or do they have a separate?
No, I think it's the same one.
It's the same one. Perfect. Okay, cool. Alright, is there any other questions before we open this up to public comment? Alright, seeing no, or. I'm opening this up, seeing no more questions from up here. I am opening this up to public comment, same rules as every other time, three minutes, thirty second warning. Please limit the comments for this item.
Thank you Dwight.
Five nine oh six Castle Avenue. We've used, I worked Shasta College for years. We use the Kenworth. They're pretty good. Our repeater there was up on Mount Baldy, so. We could go all the way almost to Sacramento without those. The bus drivers needed a better system because they sometimes go to LA and it wouldn't reach quite that far. So Kenworth is, is a workable thing. The question that came into my mind during this need to communicate. Was some municipalities. Got in trouble for using private cell phones to communicate on. There's a mandate that for, for official, you're supposed to use a. City-owned cellphone if you do that because that way there's a record of what goes on. You know, above board, meaning I don't see anything in this that was gonna contract with that, but I would like to make sure that. Those, and those conversations that need to be done in a secure situation be done, I guess, is what I'm envisioning. I imagine that's gonna work out one way or the other, but I think that that would be something that I would be concerned with. The other thing is, are these frequencies where right now? I bought it, I was told years ago on a scanner that I was going to buy, that they would only be good for a next year or two. The fact is twenty years later, that digital still works just fine. It does seem that we don't have, I'm not programmed for here. I hear partially. Conversations on, on an old scanner, but are these frequencies gonna be during a snowstorm or things where the public can on a scanner? Know what's going on in an emergency? Because I think that would be a good aspect. If people, the local citizens could hear when there's a tragedy or a fire. Right now, for example, with the bell system that we accordingly have, we can determine whether there's a fire, we can determine certain things. But the public doesn't get all the information. If there's a need for that, I hope that that system may open up. We could listen in a tragedy.
Thank you. Alright, is there any other further public comment? If you are on Zoom, please go to the reactions tab and raise your hand. Seeing no one, I will close public comment on this item. Um, that was a kind of question.
I can address both of those.
Okay, go ahead.
So to your first question on cell phones, so we do. All of the supervisors do carry city cell phones through FirstNet and so they have. I have five G coverage here in town, which is not the case for my Verizon phone. And you could talk all the way down Sheer Avenue where you cannot on, on Verizon, so we, we have. We've just recently switched to FirstNet. There is, we are having discussions on how to handle communications. But there is legal precedence that if you do use your private cellphone for work, then that can be subpoenaed. In court and those, those are subject to public data requests. So, so that aspect of it, I, I fully understand. We're gonna try and move, we do that on occasion. We're gonna try and move away from that and that's what the radio component. Is for, as far as being able to hear it on the scanners, yes, we're still gonna be analog. They're still gonna show up on the scanners. Part of the challenge we have with not being digital is we don't have access to the, to the secure lines. And most of that stuff is associated with law enforcement activities, not what we do in public works. And so in the event that there was, you know, God forbid, an active shooter or something like that. I've been in those situations where my law enforcement went to a secure channel so they could move. And do their operations in order to ensure everybody was gonna remain safe without the active shooter being able to hear them via scanner. So that stuff is primarily law enforcement side. From the public work side, we don't really necessarily have the requirement to go to a secure channel. And so we did not purchase radios that are capable of that.
And then, yeah, thank you for that. Any other discussions? The one thing I would just like to remind everyone with radios and open channels and the FCC licenses is do not swear over those radios. It makes the FCC very angry at you. And then you get to be angry at whoever just swore when the FCC calls. Alright. With that, I'm ready to open this up for a motion to approve. Alright, seeing no one, I will move that we approve the purchasing of the radios for the Public Works Department. Is there a second? Alright, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Councilmember Sebring?
Aye.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Here.
And Mayor Clenna?
Aye.
Alright, um. Approved. Alright, well that will move on to. Eleven B, discussion of a possible historic district committee and the purpose of the historic district delegates.
Alright, Mayor and Council, this, this item was presented. By a resident and property owner here in town and unfortunately, he's not here this evening to participate in the public comment, but. It's something in the past, in the development of the historic district, I believe, and kind of through the beginning years of the historic district. So I believe the historic district was adopted in around nineteen ninety one. And so through that process, they did have. A historic committee. And so what's being proposed is that we go back to that. Currently, two of our planning commissioners are, are delegates to the historic. District and their role is basically to. Look at anything that, any changes, any of that stuff and then determine whether or not it needs to go through the planning commission or if it can just move forward. And so. From a staff standpoint, the challenge we have with the historic district is that the guidelines within our city code are. Basically a mandate to be a historic district. And because we have applied as a historic district. These are the requirements we have to follow based on the National Historic Registry requirements. And so a lot of our challenges that, there's not a lot we can change, right? And, you know, I think some of the concern that, that brought this about is some of the stuff like. Sign, signs and, and the approval of signs and the approval of colors for paint and. Some of the other stuff that we're looking to try and mitigate through code, which we can. But I don't know that adding another committee outside of the planning commission and the delegates is necessarily the best. um, solution. Um, I'll say, I mean, I believe it would just add more regulatory burden and more burden on staff. So that's just my thoughts, but I don't, uh, Mr. Bailey is on the planning commission, so I'm sure he could provide a little more comment than than I can.
So before we move into public comment, um, I did have one question here, especially since I know we've since it's been brought up in um, the early, the item earlier today with Cosmont is how a business improvement district and the historic district would interact. Um, and if there was, I know we probably should have asked that when Cosmont was on the line, um, unless you have any.
So, so I mean, a lot of, so when we're looking at approvals, like the business approvals district, so say we wanted to go you know, as a, as the improvement district, we wanted to focus on improving downtown. Most likely, the improvement district would would work with the planner and say, hey, look, this is the improvements we want to do for our properties in downtown and we're going to pay for them. They would have to submit an application, just like a business would, and then that application process would go through the planning commission, just as anything else um, requires for major changes in the historic district. And so that's one of the things that I think, uh, you know, we're still going to probably have to do a lot of that, where it's still going to have to go there because of what the regulatory requirements are. Majority of that stuff is, would be on-street improvements, so that's not necessarily the same as building improvements. Because really, historic districts focused on the buildings and structural and not necessarily the street. So like, if we decided, would you want to do bump outs for crosswalks, that's not necessarily an aspect of the historic component. Um, because it's, it's a street and so it's safety and those kind of things play into it, so I would have, I'm not as familiar with that historic, those questions on historic aspects. To be able to fully answer that.
Any other questions? Alright, seeing none, I will open this item up for public comment, same rules as always, three minutes, thirty second warning. Please limit uh, any comments to this particular item. Uh, we'll do people in the room first, followed by Zoom.
I forgot Stevens on the plan question.
Oh yeah, we have two planning commission members.
Hi, Stephen Decatur, I live on Gleaves Avenue. Um, I am also on the planning commission. I, I kind of would like a little more clarity of what this means exactly. To me, what it's sounding like is something would have to go to the historic commission and then maybe to the planning commission after that. And at that point, we're adding more steps to an already complicated process for our businesses downtown and I think what we've been hearing is that we want to make things less complicated. Um, and so with that in mind, I really don't think we should form another committee. Also, the planning committee has uh, has a spot open, it's been open for a little while. Um, so we can't even fill the planning commission seats. Um, kind of why I got on the planning commission was when there were seats open, I waited till the last day and we had no applicants and I was like, okay, Wendy, I'm going to apply since nobody else has. Um, so we, we need people to fill the seats that already exist and the commissions that already exist. Um, so I really don't think we should be forming another one um, with those two things in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm kind of open either way on this. Uh, on planning commission, when we did do delegates, it said that the chair was an automatic member of that and then we would elect another person. It's never rotated since I've been on the planning commission. That's, that's a concern, number one. But what I fired up the other day and why this came back a few weeks ago is I gave Peter Ark a copy of this and I'm going to submit this to you, it's the only copy I have left. It is of a meeting staff report from January seventh, two thousand twenty, twenty-one. It was by our last city manager and within that, it goes through quite a bit of when the meeting, when the, when these people met, why they met, what the problems were. So I'm going to relitmus this at this point. I've talked with people and some of the problems that was had, that that I've been able to ascertain with the committee when it was going on was the first thing that happened was five people with badges and uh, city fire marshals and things walked into a building and started pointing at things. And that was very offensive to to property owners to have that. I don't see that that's a problem. But that's a lot of the comments that I got back from that time was that the board was too you know, too regulated within it. Like I say, there were times that they didn't meet, times it was passed on, things like that. So I think that that, that I just gave him, I'd like everybody here to be able to, I did not print five copies, but I did fire this up because I gave it to Peter Ark some weeks ago and he immediately came back and quoted from that on a number of issues. I'm not saying it's good information, it's bad information, but it is historical information that kind of points why the previous one did not work. So, but as far as forming one or not, I'm either way with that.
Thank you. Thank you. I, oh, alright. Alright, and it looks like we do have a uh, public, uh, member of the public on Zoom. Alright, you should be ready to go, can you?
I think that's Alan.
Alan, are you?
Yeah, there he is.
Hi guys, um, so as someone who is a business owner in the historic district of address four one one six Pine Street, um, I do think that what Steven was saying where the committee was having a hard time filling chairs already isn't a good thing to prioritize staff when you guys are so busy. So as someone who is in the historic downtown Dunsmere District, I do want to be one of the people that can help steward that committee in a way where it takes the pressure off of city officials with what they have and maybe put it back on the business owners of the community down here as well. Um, I try to be mindful that there is very, very limited vested interest and I want to be one of the people that can facilitate that with the blessings of people like Brahma Cloud and also um, Peter Art as well. And that, thank you so much.
Alright, thank you. Alright, uh, any other further public comment?
Andrea Herr, forty-seven forty Simpson Avenue. I, you know, I've listened to Peter and others uh, talk about this over a number of meetings and it it just seems to me like we have a large historic, a pretty large, relatively, um, historic district. And it seems like if it's set up right, it could be helpful to have um, the people like Alan, like Peter, um, I, I mean, I don't know if he himself is interested, but who are uh, very much attached to these buildings and their needs to provide some extra support, extra resources. So it it seems to me like it could be a good thing, but it have to be, you know, set up in in an effective way.
Thank you. Is there any other further public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment on this item.
So I did only open this for uh, basically discussion, so if it is something the council wants to bring back, I could provide that staff report, which I was not aware of previously. And and I can provide that to the council um, in a future meeting.
I was move, I was uh, leaning towards uh, moving to table the item uh, at the end of discussion. Uh, anyways, uh, because I would also like to get council member Lucchese's input on this item.
Agreed.
Um, I feel like she has a lot of knowledge uh, that might be valuable towards how we might want to proceed and move forward potentially in this. Um, or if there's a better way to do it or more efficient way to do it. Um, but before we, before I do move to table this, is there any discussion amongst council that anyone would like to proceed with?
Matty? I'd just like to recognize that um, people mean a lot of different things by historic district, so it can be somewhat difficult. I I think the, the main proponents of this committee see it as a way of cherishing uh, the assets we do have in the downtown. Um, I guess I I kind of would like to see us put our energy towards the business improvement district and potentially encompass historic preservation management maybe uh, into that, i-if the overlay can be the same. Obviously, that's going to take a lot of cooperation from the current property owners. I I would say this much, I'm not necessarily in favor of any more regulation um, or staff capacity put towards this. However, what we have now doesn't seem to be working for what little protection we do need from the historic district uh, when it comes to education perhaps. Um, of what it means to be a historic district, why we should find it valuable. I mean, on a, ultimately, we need to kind of embrace that we have a historic district and encourage people to find value in that and come together on it or potentially look at um, moving away from having one. Um, but I think that's very different than valuing the downtown uh, for some people and it's the same for others. So I think that's kind of the the crux of the issue. Um, I'd be happy to table it, I'd like to hear councilman Lucchese's thoughts on it. I I do think we need something different than what we have now, which is uh, pretty much nothing.
The other thing I would really like to see um, moving forward uh, in kind of, this would probably just go into the staff report uh, or kind of supplemental report is I know staff is leaning more towards uh, not going towards uh, having the historic district committee at the current time. Um, but I would like to see if we did move forward, kind of a recommendation from staff on what the exact responsibilities and powers of said committee would be. Just to kind of give that kind of option, because right now I don't necessarily feel like I want to say, yes, we need this committee when I haven't seen what the committee, I mean, you know, it, we did have this committee and they did do something and part of the reason they haven't met or we haven't had them in a while is they made property owners not happy by going in and starting to try to tell people what they couldn't, couldn't do. Um, and that's why I think it's important for us to kind of maybe to see if we could find when the committee was created, what its roles and responsibilities were, suggestions now and just get a little bit more information. And that is also why I do feel um, have strongly towards tabling this uh, at the current time.
If, one of the concerns is if we do establish a property BID in downtown or a BID, they also have to have a board?
Yes.
And so now, then we're adding two boards? And we're already struggling to fill just planning commission spots and finance committee. And so we already have a pretty substantial unengaged property owner situation in downtown, so I do have a concern about how, how are we going to fill these positions? Just to meet the needs of having a BID, um, let alone having another layer on top of that, unless it's the same people.
I would be open to, or I would feel comfortable doing something along the lines of if we were to restart this of basically having it be in effect uh, until a business, if a business improvement district was created, um, have this committee basically be in effect until that point and then reevaluating it and the business improvement you know, with the sole idea of merging those two boards, if we do choose to go in that direction. I'm going to hand these over to you. Uh, because I would also like to see those, I think those would be very valuable to have as part of the agenda next time this comes before.
Agreed.
Because there's some really interesting stuff in there. Um, thank you very much, Mr. Bailey, for providing that. Two thousand twenty-one.
Yep, January seventh, two thousand twenty-one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I will, uh, on the next time we bring it forward, I will add this and I will also engage our new planner.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to have a little more discussion about that, because I think that by then we'll be a little further into the BID discussion as well.
Alright, is there anything else before I make a motion? I move that we, oh.
Yeah, you're already, you already did public comment.
Um, we already had public comment, Alan, and I don't know if your hands, you still raised them earlier. Um, with that, I will move that we table this item um, to come back to later date, uh, specifically adding in those two uh, previous staff reports, um, and a little bit more of a report. Alright. Alright, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I as well.
Tabled. Alright, and with that, we'll move on to item numbers or item literacy, uh, budget timeline information.
Alright, mayor and council, so uh, this year is the year that we adopt our uh, biannual budget. And so I have uh, put forward a, a budget timeline that uh, I planned on doing at the finance committee, which we end up canceling this week due to uh, no quorum. But uh, ultimately, this is uh, kind of where we're at. Today, we're uh, at council goals, which is the, should be the next uh, was the last item on the agenda tonight. And then um, starting next week, I'll be, I'll have a department head meeting, issue budget worksheets. Um, between the twenty-third and February seventh, I'll be uh, working on staffing plans. Are we meeting our needs, those kind of things, and then I'll meet with department heads and also develop capital improvement plan by the end of February. Um, in March, uh, budget compilation will happen and we'll begin bringing that stuff over to finance committee. Um, we have four finance committees, um, where we will be discussing uh, stuff associated with uh, the council goals, which we're going to do later on, that'll kind of drive our budget. And then um, the CIP and general fund and and enterprise. And then um, I have on April third city council workshop that we will kind of do some pre-briefing and stuff like that before we go in. Um, so that it's not, uh, then we have some more discussion of opportunities in a workshop than we do in a normal council meeting. And then um, we would bring that back to city council in May. Um, for two more workshops, discussing the biggest portions of the budget, general fund and enterprise. And then for approval on June twenty-sixth, after all of those comments are received. Uh, so, um, based on the city council's uh, goals set later this, in this meeting, um, I also, one of the things I was thinking of adding in there was uh, probably like a, a city, city staff uh, kind of, or city manager and senior staff where we would open a open for a day for public comments and, and uh, just to have general discussion with uh, with the public. Um, kind of on those goals and how we plan on implementing them. Um, we'll probably do that at the wheelhouse or when uh, Be Kind reopens uh, here in the next month or so.
Alright. Uh, any questions before we move into public comment? Matthew, is the finance committee charity have any questions before we move into council comment?
I do not.
Alright, with that, I'll open this up to public comment, uh, same rules as always, three minutes, thirty seconds. Alright, seeing no public comment, I will uh, close public comment. Um, one thing I would like to see um, is just before we get to that main finance or that first finance committee uh, item on March tenth.
Yeah.
I would just like to see a couple as we move through February. Um, just some kind of updates of just kind of, this is what's going on, things we've learned.
In, in finance committee?
Yeah, they can be short items, but just kind of keep.
Yeah, so I, the reason I, I, I expect, fully expect to have fin- two, probably two finance committees.
Mm-hmm.
But I, the reason I didn't put them on there, because they weren't going to be budget focused.
Mm-hmm.
So um, I will definitely provide comment in those, but I just didn't add them to the agenda just because that was not going to be the sole focus of finance committee.
Cool, sounds good, makes sense. Uh, anything else on for discussion on this? Matthew?
Uh, sorry, yeah, uh, I, I generally like the timeline, I like having it in front of us so we can hold ourselves to it. I guess I'd, I'd comment that um, I do like to make sure it has plenty of time for final review for finance committee. Um, i-if we find ourselves you know, up against the, the wall, we'll just have to meet weekly uh, to get it done in time for council to also have the opportunity to have multiple meetings to review it.
Yeah, and I, I, I think we do have the opportunity that if we want to, because I didn't put anything for that second meeting in uh, April for the city council. Um, that we could, if we Um, that we could, if we felt we needed to, based on where we were at, through the finance committee process, we could. Add in another council workshop if we needed to. Um, and we also have a meeting, the first uh, the first meeting in June, um, that is available. Um, that I did not add anything on either.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I see that.
I have, yeah, there's, so there is some flexibility on the city council side, and we can always add into finance committee if we need to. Um, I just have high expectations of myself, so I felt I could accomplish it in four finance committee.
Uh, well, I I think we we might be able to this year, so that sounds good. Uh, while we're uh, considering this, if you could um. Counsel pass the resolution adopting the new grant program. And it doesn't go into effect really till the next fiscal year, but if you could potentially uh, make sure the, the public side of that, the uh. The marketing material we directed staff to prepare accompanying it kind of comes out at the same time as the budget, so that people. Who were looking for that, you know, funding source, know that they have uh, an application to fill out in the fall and what what the whole program is. Uh, before it gets lost.
Agreed, and I will, I, my intention is to bring that back at uh, the next meeting. Um, for city council, uh, just didn't have time to get all the details done on that. Um, but I will bring that back at the next meeting based on what our discussion was tonight um, as well, and then uh, I can uh. We can uh, move that forward um, through implementation.
Thank you so much, city manager.
All right, anything else? This was information only, correct?
Correct.
All right, if there's nothing else, uh, let's move on to uh, item number D, informal discussion on city projects.
All right. Uh, so Mayor and Council, um, I have, uh, there's a, I added a extra, extra little packet there. Um, uh, council member Brian, I did email it to you just before the meeting, as I found out you weren't going to be here. So um, in this I have.
Received it and reviewed it.
Okay, so I have a little more detail associated with the projects that I didn't get into the uh, council packet, but essentially. Um, we have five, what I would consider major projects uh, that are planned for this next uh. This next uh, construction cycle, and uh, I guess there. My packet is a little bit different order than what I have here. Um, I do have a packet. I think I have an extra one that the, the public can look at if they would like. Um, so. Essentially, we uh, we're, we are looking at about between thirteen and fourteen million dollars in projects. Um, over this summer, um, across five different projects, and so if we look at the, we'll just start with the the little packet here. So item, yeah, item uh, item one is sewer collection project. Um, currently, um, that project is in construction. It is located all throughout Dunce, basically from the north end to the south end. Um, so I didn't add a map because it's really complicated. Um, we do have a plan set that is available for review. Um, we are doing uh, the contractors doing regular public outreach. We have received some feedback that people weren't aware. Um, but, so for the public's purpose, I would like everybody to be realized if you, if you haven't received. It looks like they're doing work, check your front door, because they are putting uh, they are putting blue notes in seventy-two hours prior to any work. And so we've had a substantial number of comments back, what are you doing in my front yard? Well, we we notified them seventy-two hours prior. Um, they just maybe not been using their front doors. Um, so this project's managed by Pace Engineering and uh, Public Works Director, our contractors Cox and Cox. I believe the project's cost is about seven point eight million, and they're expected to complete it by fall. Um, and so this uh. Right now, they're working on um, all of the s- check valves for the sewer laterals. Um, that are not part of the sewer main replacement portion. Um, so we, this project, when it was originally bid, um, came in way over budget, and so we went in and kind of. Did some value engineering and reduced the scope and we had to do that on most of the projects that you see coming forward tonight. Um, that's kind of where we are. They all got rejected because of cost, and then they've been reworked. To meet within our budget guidelines, and so um, this project is. It's ongoing, it's just really started. We haven't gotten to the dirty part of the, of the sewer uh, main replacement. Where they're tearing up roads and stuff like that, so that will come after probably in, beginning in April.
I have two quick questions before we move on to the next project.
Sure.
Uh, number one here, we've got on the staff report, it says seven point two million.
Yeah.
On this, it's seven point eight.
I corrected, I corrected it, yeah.
And then can you just remind me, SRF funded, that's?
Yes, uh, state revolving fund.
State revolving fund, cool, right.
Was that grant? That was, yeah, that was actually a grant.
Okay.
So.
Cool, and that's a hundred total?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, these first, all of these are grants except for the airport and the public works building. Um, the airport is a ninety-five percent grant, so um, we'll discuss that when we get there, but.
All right.
Any other questions?
Any other questions on that one?
Okay, so the other ones, I included a little map, so you knew where they were at. Um, so uh, Mossbury Springs.
Say one thing here.
Sure.
So just so everyone is aware, um, if anyone is following on. Uh, the agenda online versus the packet, we are first talking about the sewer collection project. Uh, which is the third one listed on the staff report, then Mossbury Fall or Mossbury Springs Improvement, which is the second one.
Then Hedge Creek.
Then Hedge Creek.
And then Airport.
And then Airport, and then Public Works, okay.
Correct.
So other than sewer, so sewer and Hedge Creek were just flipped around, okay.
Yes. I didn't, I did not refer back to that when I re, when I was compiling, so I apologize. All right, so Mossbury uh, Springs Improvement Project for uh. Um, the new council members, um, so this project began, I believe, in planning process in what, two thousand and sixteen? Something like that. Two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen was part of our planning process, and so this, this is the last. Well, now it'll be the second to last phase, because we, we ended up, the project, we bid this project last year. Um, it came in way over budget, and so now we are going out, back out to bid, so essentially. If you look at the little map, in the bottom left-hand corner is the bottling plant. And we're up in the middle of the trees on uh, by Saint, in Saint Germain's property. And uh, you can see by the little flag, that is where our private project is. Um, it's behind a fence and secure, so. Um, so this project is a two million dollar project. It's actually funded by two different uh, funding streams. One for um, one to handle emergency chlorination and the other one to handle the um, actual spring improvements themselves. And so um, I'd be open to taking to any of the council members out if they would like to see it. Um, so this project is getting ready to go to bid um, here in uh, February with bid opening in early March. And then construction beginning in April, and uh, with the work at the springs to begin in June with completion by fall. So we have a very strict uh, timeline on when any construction can happen at the springs due to its. Um, if it's wet or if there's snow, it just takes a long time, and then there's, there's potential negative impacts to uh. To the river and to the environment if we do any work uh, prior to that due to moisture. And, and, and rainfall, so our actual work at the springs is limited to June fifteenth to October fifteenth. Which is a really, really short timeline when you're working in that environment, and so. Um, but I should have included was a few pictures, so um. So our springs are actually the water that is coming and falling over top Mossbury Falls, so we are two hundred and some feet above that. And basically, the water falls over the edge and goes down, and so we're working on a very narrow, about twelve to fifteen foot. Like maintenance road, and up there we have spring boxes, basically giant concrete boxes that collect the water, they go into our pipes. And then, then they go and do this big giant building that's called a weir, and then it comes into town. And so um, those pipes have not been replaced, I think we, somewhere back in the nineteen fifties. And they're above ground, so they're beginning to show substantial corrosion and wear. And so this project is to update that to stainless steel pipes, and then um, also, um, we have. To do some improvements to our spring boxes to ensure we're able to keep uh, quality water. We currently have uh, have one of them offline because. We could not keep it, it it had too much stale water in it, um, based on the way it's designed, so we're redesigning that. Um, as part of the project, but ultimately, this was a, this, this also includes um. Uh, emergency chlorination, um, and so we will have two locations for that, one of them at the springs and one of them. Uh, near the um, the bottling plant, and uh, that is in the event that we do have. Um, some contamination that we would have to chlorinate for, which hmm, is a state requirement, that's not our requirement. We've only had that issue one time, and that was in nineteen seventy-five, when the septic system failed at, at um. The um, Saint Germain Foundation property, and now they are on sewer, and so that issue is. We haven't had any issues since, knock on wood, but uh, as per state mandate, um, they require it.
Are their pipes part of the previous project?
No, they are not. They're still in good shape.
Okay.
And so this project uh, um. It's really complicated. The uh, the big reason that it did not go last summer was because of the permitting requirements. And that was like a nine-month process, and they, they just blew our budget out of the water, so we went and redesigned it. Made it smaller, aren't going to replace everything at the springs that we hope to replace. We're looking for additional funding for that, but haven't had any luck. We did submit some through CDBG, and so that is what we're going phase two. So once we complete phase two, then we will complete, that would be the last component of all of the water projects that we had outlined in our two thousand and sixteen. Kind of plan, and so then we'll update our new plan on what our next ten years will look like uh, for water, for the water enterprise. Um, so is there any questions related to the Springs project?
Nope.
Okay. All right, and so, so the next project is also water-related. This is a UV project. Um, and so um, when you're treating water, UV is better than chlorine. Um, from a standpoint of not putting any chemicals into the system, but UV also doesn't handle all of the problems that you could associate with a water system like. Uh, in the event that there was a E. coli or something along that lines, that's where the emergency chlorination comes in. So the water UV project uh, is uh, is grant-funded. We have a two million dollar uh, grant. Um, for that budget, and uh, so essentially, in Hedge Creek Falls, I'll, right along the north fence of the bottling plant. They, we will place a building, I don't have a picture of the building with me, but it's essentially, it'll just be a nice-looking block building. Um, that eventually, on one end of it, we hope to add restrooms that would match it, so it all looks kind of the same. Um, but this building is in final design, is also going to go out to bid um, in February with March, early March bid opening. Um, construction on this, because of its location, can start in April, May, um, depending on uh, the timing of what the contractor wants. Um, but uh, the, it will have an impact to the park. Um, it will remove some trees. But uh, a couple of those are dangerous anyway, that we need to remove to ensure we don't have damage to the bottling plant. Um, so this project uh, is the event, so UV is for bacteria, correct?
Chloroform.
Chloroform, yeah, but it is not, UV cannot, in the event that there's E. coli, then we would have to chlorinate, but. But it does handle chloroform, which is typically the, the, the. More common aspect of what we would have to treat for. And so um, this is uh, actually, it's kind of a really interesting project. Um, but with that design, our plan and intention for future purposes is to re, to move the. The water mains, so the water main kind of, there's a property to the south of the bottling plant. The water main actually goes between the buildings and runs right through the middle of the property, and so it prevents any kind of. Redevelopment of that property, because it basically bisects that property, the front half is disconnected from the back half because of that line. And that's the main water line coming into town, so part of the intention with this is to plan for future to bring that water line out to the street where it belongs. And, and basically vacate what's in that property, so this is kind of step one of that process. Is to get this in place, and then later on, we'll come back with a project when we get more funding and grant funding to. To move the pump house and, and replace that thousand feet of water main. Yeah, yeah, it's like a twenty-five-foot easement through the middle. So, and that one's basically on the same timeline as the other water project. Okay, um, then we have the airport taxiway um, realignment. So in the little picture there, you can kind of see how the, the little, if you follow the little white line, it comes off the runway. And then how it goes up and then back to the taxiway. Um, so that is, so they have what's considered. I believe it's like the line and a return or something like, there's a, I I don't remember what they call the line, but they, basically the front edge of those hangers on the top there. If you draw a line straight down, you can see that it lines up with the, with what is the picture, would be the right side of the picture. Where the taxiway is, so right now, it's out of alignment, and then it, it has some. Safety criteria that we're not meeting due to the proximity of the parking spots. And so basically, what we're doing is that section of pavement, all of that'll be ground out, removed, and then replaced. Um, with pavement, uh, new pavement and uh, restriped to meet the s- new safety requirements. And so this is a, about a one point one million dollar project. All of the area up along the fence, to the fence, so it's kind of a steep embankment at the airport, um, that area there. Um, all the vegetation is also going to be removed, and then it's going to be um, matted and, and we're going to put, they're going to put rock on it. And uh, so that will also help with the vegetation management there as well. And uh, that project, uh, I think is going out to bid next, out for advertisement next week or the following week, so we're really close to getting that one done as well. Um, at least on to the, out for bid anyway, and so um. That one is uh, that's a ninety-five percent, um, and then the state covers basically the. They cover like up to five percent, but with the calculations and everything and what they determined, so our share of it's going to be like. For a million-dollar project, it was going to cost the city a little over five thousand dollars, so that's a pretty good win.
What's the larger building behind the airport there?
That is uh, that would be Dave Fabrini's uh, leased area.
Was it city property this week?
Correct. Okay, and the last one on the, on this packet, then we can kind of address a couple of the smaller ones that I don't have maps for. The, the Public Works project, so I kind of outlined here, as you can see, that kind of goes up towards the top edge of the parking lot there by the ball field. Um, that's ADA improvements on the sidewalk, and then the primary area where the building will be located is uh. Is right uh, right where those buildings are currently. Um, so I had a little bit of a challenge and. Dennis I are kind of struggling with it, so I, I've, I've been frustrated with the kind of the. Pace's involvement and, and they kind of over-engineering and, and cost and where that's gone. Um, and when I approached him about, I need to get it to bid, they said, oh, well, it's another seventy thousand dollars. Uh, so I engaged a building official and said, uh, I think we're getting a little out of scope here, let's discuss this. So we're actually in the process of getting ready to pull that back from Pace and have the building official take it on. We're far enough through the design process. That we should have, with the cost we already put out, we should have already been out to bid and, and moved forward. Not an additional seventy thousand in cost, so I'm pulling that back in. Um, so that's one of the challenges. Um, I did, I did write, do a little write-up on a couple of the challenges have, so one of them, what I just discussed was, was design costs. Um, but financing, so the financing landscape is, I don't know why it's so challenging for, for you to build a, a building. But it's, it's, we can't seem to get, we couldn't get the banks on board initially, we reached out to local banks. Lending was not favorable. Um, now that's shifted a little bit, we're looking at uh. But, so we did engage USDA, but we also ran into a funding issue with. One of our water, with the Springs project, and so we tried tying those two projects together. USDA didn't like that, kind of rejected that in, in late November, early December, so now we're kind of have to circle back around and resubmit. Either for USDA, which is now turning out to be almost a nine-month process, which is way too long, so we're, we're, we're. We've had some interest from some contractors that may be interested in building and leasing back to us for a period of two years, and then we would. Have a finalized purchase price, and so we are exploring that option, and hopefully, within the next ten days or so, I'll have a lot more details on that. Also, Mechanics Bank has also come back and said they are looking at changing their program up a little bit, so we. Also, Mechanics Bank has also come back and said they are looking at changing their program up a little bit, so we may be able to uh. Get it underneath their umbrella as well, so that landscape shifted a little bit, so we're reverting back to. Some, some more creative options, um. One, due to cost, um, it's proposed to be two, Pace was saying almost three, three million dollars. I believe we can do it in much less than that, um, I did provide a kind of a concept picture of what it would look like, with a layout. And so, I know there's probably more questions about this one than I can provide answers for, but I'm open to discussion on it.
Well, I guess I can start with uh, I'm still very attached to pursuing USDA financing. The, the benefits in the long run and short term for the city are just self-apparent. I, I totally understand trying to put the two projects together, I'm not sure. I, I, I think we owe it to the community uh, in managing their money to try to get that program in place. Especially if we're looking at building a two-million-dollar building, if we can't get that sort of financing. I'm less comfortable spending that much on the development of this building.
I think we could get. I believe we could get it done for a mil- one, two, is probably where we're at. So, that, that's my, that's my feeling, I think there, I think Pace had over-engineered it, to be fair.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, I'm a lot more comfortable at your bank and private finance options in that price range. That being said, I, I do love your leadership in this. Project about trying to build something that'll last and be useful and beneficial to Dunsmere for, you know, well past the years we finance it. Hopefully a hundred-plus years, so if we do get the incredible um, for, for the new council members edification. Uh, USDA offers like one percent forty-year loans, making it a lot easier to put this sort of public infrastructure in and build it right. So, at that point, I think we should take advantage of that program and build it out, you know, as best, best possible version of it. As opposed to cutting corners, so um, sorry to say that, I think we need to develop both sides still, but I'm open to either, but those are kind of my thoughts.
I know you've been kind of thinking, and I don't know what you and Matt have discussed, um. I know it sounds like you have kind of an idea on what you wanna talk about at the next couple of finance committees. Um, I think we're kind of back at the level where this, this needs to go in front of the finance committee for another discussion. Um, that's my take on this is, especially when you're talking about potential changes to the overall price. Um, new, new auctions. As soon as we have any information at all on clarifying, you know, with, to get some clarity, I would. I would really be a lot more comfortable if this was to go back in front of the finance committee, um. When we have a little bit more of that information. Especially if we're talking about, you know, as you said, Pace is massively over-engineered this, and we're looking at a considerable. Considerably lower cost, I would uh. I think then that that is. We'll find it, many, look at some of these options in more detail. Um, but once again, obviously, we don't want to schedule that before we have some of that information.
Yeah, I would expect probably mid-February, I'll have, should have more, um. There's a couple of other things I want to chat about, so do you have any more questions about this project or?
I guess I just want to point out the um, the, the photo you sent, or the, you know, the um, rendering of the building. I don't know if that is more just artist rendering or exact, but I, I would definitely, especially if we go the two-million-dollar USDA route. Uh, try to put something together that's a little more aesthetically pleasing, potentially incorporating some, some wood beams. And designs that we, we built something as an example of what we'd like to see people build in Dunsmere.
Or something that could at least. Be dressed up a little bit, even if it is that, but.
Yeah, and I, I mean, that's just kind of a, it's just kind of a rendering, I mean, the back half of it's probably gonna be what the back half is, but the front half, the forward-facing portion. Definitely, we can look at.
Perfect, thank you, Dustin.
Right, yeah, I don't have anything more right now, like I said, I feel like there's so many. I feel like it's kind of in flux right now, and I feel like we need a few more of these details to solidify before we. Before I have anything else.
Okay, then I got a couple of other projects that uh, we're working on, um, waterline improvements for the city park. Um, we just discussed that today, um. We had, we need to finish some of those, so we do have a, a leak in the water line going down there. Um, so, we're gonna have to do some sort of repair, um. Or, well, replacement is where we're at, I mean, it's, it's a really old pipe, so. Um, we're working on that, sprinkler systems, rehabs in the park, we've been working on that, but we have a lot more work to do. Um, now that we are kind of overseeing some of that stuff, um, or overseeing the maintenance side of it. We realized how in disrepair it is, and so we've been focusing on that. Um, and then library damage repairs is another one that we're gonna get ready to work on, and so that's something. Once we get some quotes, we'll have to bring back to council for those interior improvements, and uh. And that's primarily the, most of the projects, so one of the concerns and one of the things that I'm gonna bring back to the finance committee. Um, so, in light of all these projects, the challenge we have is, is cash flow. Um, we have about two million dollars in the bank through all of our different funds, um, but um. My expectation is that we're gonna be about somewhere between five and seven million dollars short. To pay our contractors come about July or August, and so we are currently in the process of um. Discussions with Mechanics Bank on interim financing, so the challenge we have is that all of these projects are. State-funded except for the FAA and the Public Works Building, Public Works Building is on us, because that's a general-funded project, or. It's funded by the city, so that also takes away from our cash. But the airport project, we typically have a thirty-day turnaround to get paid. But the other projects, what they're telling us is somewhere between ninety days and a hundred and eighty days before we receive. A payment tha- that, so we put a, we put in a pay request in June, we may not see that money till January. And when we doing all these projects with all of them completing about August, September. The expectation is we will receive about ten million dollars roughly in, in pay requests. In that little short amount of time, and we can hold them off for, you know, sixty days or so, but we. Getting any longer than that, then we get antsy contractors, and so we need to, we're working on some interim financing. Um, to associated with that and what that looks like, and so we, we'll have some meetings here shortly to. Be able to bring something forward back to council and finance committee.
Yeah, because obviously, like you said, there's just that gap between when the grant money comes to us and when we need to pay the contractors.
Yeah, and, and we may go to, I mean, we had discussed possibly like the bigger project, the, the sewer collection project. Their, their application, so the ones that are taking the longest, but unfortunately, all the rest of these are managed by the same people, right? The water project and uh, and the Springs Improvement Project, all three of those are. There's four different funding streams, all managed by the same group of people, and so then. We're, we're dealing with the same problem, right, so um, the expectation is that we're gonna. Need some cash to make sure we can, you know, keep the contractors happy and, and move forward, so there is gonna be some expense with that. Um, associated with interest, but we should, we should do pretty decent, and, but we're looking at possibly doing bi-weekly. Um, pay requests and requesting that from the contractors, just because we don't want to get too far behind. We want to have as much cash in, in their hands, saying, hey, we want, we need you to send us cash, because we're submitted names and get. Through the process, and just to keep that going, so we're gonna, we're gonna be on that pretty heavy this summer. To make sure we can keep on going. So, that's uh, really all I have for the project updates.
Right, um, any other que- any questions? Nope, alright, uh, with that, I will open this up to public comment, uh, same rules, three minutes, thirty-second warning. Please limit anything to this particular item. Seeing no one, I will close public comment, alright, and with that, um, is there any discussion? Nope, um, thank you for putting this all together.
Yeah, no problem.
And uh, we will move on to the next item, uh, item number, it's letter E. Council goal-setting for budget purposes.
Mayor and council, so the very last page of our agenda packet. I realize after that we issued it, I have a couple more to add on our list, but uh, for discussion, I'm kind of, you know. It's kind of some overarching goals, what do we want to focus on, and then a list of projects, um, and some of those fit within those goals, some of them don't. And so there's just kind of some of the things that I've heard comment on, and some of the things that I feel like we need to look at, um. Improve downtown, I think that's a pretty common comment, but if we want to focus on the proposed goals. And then we can go through the project list and discuss those, and I can kind of give an overview of what each of those is, and, and then um. Then if we could prioritize the top and the bottom separately and independently, then that would help me uh, develop the budget. So I don't know if you want to read it first, and then kind of, then we have a discussion about it, get some public comment in on it, or?
So, one thing I would kind of like to know, and I mean, I can kind of judge this a little bit, just off of our knowledge, but. Um, especially for those proposed goals, um. Obviously, there is a huge why, or a huge difference in terms of. Difficulty of implementation, time of implementation, and the amount of money that it's going to take to do them throughout these different goals. Which one of these, those goals do you see as kind of low-hanging fruit? Uh, that could be achieved fairly easily, and which one of those goals do you see is gonna be cost a little bit more, be a little bit more difficult? Um, and if we, and as the budget kind of starts tightening up, um. Would be more likely to get, gets dropped, so that's just kind of my first starting.
Sure, so it depends on the funding source, right, so, like, if we look at like, um, improve downtown. Um, reduce burdensome regulations, um, park infrastructure. Um, those are all general fund. You know, so those will be restricted to that fund, whereas road infrastructure, I have multiple avenues, I have general fund, and I have. Three different road funds, um, and we do have some money available there, so I have some ideas for that, and which I probably. I don't know if I put it on here. Yeah, chip sue multiple roads, um, that one's on the project list, um, so that's a fairly low-hanging fruit. But we do have a couple of things that have come up, uh, since then that I, we probably need to do it, I'm, it may reduce that amount, but it's definitely something we could do. Um, park infrastructure improvement, I put a lot of those down here, so when we prioritize those, then that's kind of how I'll weed them out. Um, downtown, some of it depends on whether we're doing it internally or if we have to contract it out, right? So if the guys are able to, to handle some of these projects internally over the next two years, then that reduces our costs. You know, like, for example, they're working on uh, Prospect right now, Fishing Access, they rebuilt the whole road, and. You know, it's taken them about a week, but by the time it's done, it's gonna be a really great improvement for that area. You know, like, improve public work efficiencies through planned improvements, uh, like. You know, we're planning to work on eliminating manual sprinklers and reducing all of our areas for weed eating, some of that. So that's a lot of internal, and we can handle most of that without a lot of outside expense. Um, additional expense, like contractors, I mean, um, so depends on what it is, um, depends on. But like downtown improvements, you know, if we're doing ADA ramps and stuff like that, that probably will require a contractor, which is gonna. Cost more than what we could do internal, I mean, that's just because I don't have, we don't have the experience currently, or at least not yet anyway, um. They're learning every day, and they're growing their knowledge and tackling big projects, but uh. You know, they just don't have the experience to, you know, put in ADA ramps, which is okay, um, we'll get there, um. You know, but like park, park improvements, a lot of that stuff for me is, you know. It's project-based, I mean, it depends on what it is, you know, because, you know, we want to do some improvements in the grandstands. And some, a lot of that is volunteer help, and so that doesn't take a lot of effort from us, maybe just some cash, right? For a community, you know, to provide the materials, um, you know, so. I guess it just depends on where it's at, these up here on top are broader, but then we get into the project lists that kind of fit into those. And um, you know, burdensome regulations, that's general fund, you know, that's, we're kind of on, in that theme already. Um, with uh, you know, we're talking about business improvement district, we talked about historic district, we're talking about. Code improvements, all of that stuff kind of is the same pot, so if we want to look at that as one pot and be like, hey, oh. You know, we want to commit twenty thousand dollars to X, then now's the time to tell me, I want to commit twenty thousand dollars to there, right? And then um, we'll work it in and bring it out in the budget. Um, as for the proposed projects, so I can kind of go through those, and so you can kind of see how they relate, I guess. Now, thinking about the way you thought about it, I would probably have categorized these according to goals up above.
That's fine, we can.
But we can kind of, we can kind of go through it, so compliance with daylight parking rules and impacts to crosswalks in downtown, actually. Impacts, uh, actually it impacts crosswalks everywhere, so new state law requires us to leave twenty feet on either side of a crosswalk. Um, no parking. And unless there's a bump out, and that's for improved safety in the down, in, in congested areas, and so. When we look at our downtown, we kind of drove through it the other day, and we're walking through it like, okay, well, we gotta move this one, move that one. We have to, we have some, a lot of reconfiguring work to do here in the downtown sector. Because of parking, and trying to limit the number of parking stalls that we're gonna lose by moving crosswalks. And so, you know, like, for example, there's a crosswalk. And right there by the pizza, or by travelers, on the traveler's side going towards pizza, um. To towards Genius Place, right? Well, we'd, if we move that crosswalk over to the island. And then it comes across there, then we only lose one parking stall rather than losing three, right? And so it's, it's about how do we maneuver it within downtown to make it work, you know, we don't feel like we can. Move the one here by the fountain very much, because of the distance between that one and the next one down the street. But the one in front of the city hall here, we have to move, or we lose the parking sta- spots in front of city hall that everybody uses when they pay their bills. And so we're gonna move that one to the north, kind of where the, the tree and the mailbox are, right, so it's kind of. That's, that's a required one, I don't know what it's gonna cost, but I have some, it's, it's definitely one that we have to work on.
So I have two kind of things on this, uh, this particular one, that I just wanted to touch on here. Um, so for number one, for the seat grants for active transportation projects and how that ties into this. Um, it's, I'm sure you remember, I was a big proponent of putting in uh, raised crosswalks.
Yeah.
Raised walkways, um. And I'm just kind of, I, when we're going through all this, that's something I'm still really passionate about, because it would not only make. Crossing the street safer, but it would also help control speed through downtown, um, and while we're looking at moving around crosswalks. I would just, I'm still really hoping that we can do that at some point here in the next year or two, especially if we could get some grants for it. Um, and if we're kind of looking at rearranging the crosswalks, I would just kind of like to have that as a. That is the next step, when we're looking at, if we're moving it here, is that gonna work, where, you know, just kind of how that might tie in.
And I had kind of some of that stuff in my brain when we were talking about it the other day, but I, you know, I'll pull out the active transportation plan, because I know it's some of the stuff that was in there. Because I think it had talked about maybe bump outs or something like that. Um, you know, bump outs are a little more expensive, because you gotta reconfigure the road, but we, we have discussed it for a safety concern. Right here on this intersection, because of, because line of sight. Is, is really tough when you're coming up the hill and you have to turn left. And so that's one of the things that we're concerned about, just because of the angle, and so. We kind of felt it was okay to leave that crosswalk there, because then it eliminates one parking spot that we probably need to eliminate anyway for line of sight for traffic.
So how, so here's the next question that I have on this, how long do we have to comply with? How long do we have before we need to move these crosswalks, um, and eliminate these parking spots, or do the bump outs?
I don't, I don't know that answer, do you know that answer off the top of your head?
No. I'm still trying to grasp all.
I'm still trying to grasp all the timelines on all of this. They really haven't come out, said again. Set up when it's got to take place. But keep in mind, this is for.
The next two years.
Crosswalks and unmarked crosswalks. So even though we don't have a dedicated crosswalk somewhere.
Yeah, for example, like down on Oak. And on Dunsmere Avenue going across Oak Street, we don't have, or from. From Oak across Dunsmere Avenue, we don't have a dedicated crosswalk there, but we also don't have a parking issue, right? So we just, we'll just mark off more of no parking. But those are, we have to do that all over town. It's not just downtown. So, you know.
It's quite a process.
Yeah.
You know, just walking downtown the other day from city hall to the pizza factory. Currently, if we had to go mark those out in red zones right now, we would lose nine parking spots.
So where am I going to park at my house?
You have to put a parking garage on top of your house. Parking ramp.
It's a mess, guys. It's.
Yeah, and.
I can understand it down in the cities, I can understand it. Some of these historic towns, it's going to change the whole concept of the historic district. And that's something that needs to be considered. Do we? Move crosswalks and maintain the historic town? Um, or do we put bump outs everywhere? And we already have two, so you can imagine what that's going to look like through town.
Where, which bump outs?
At the theater.
Oh yeah. I mean, I, I don't think, I think you've done right. The bump outs could be a decent option. The question I, I'm not sure on though is what exactly. You know, that, but that also depends on what size the bump outs need to be to conform with the regulation. Um, I, I kind of feel like this.
Just out to the edge of the traffic lane.
How, well, how long do they need to be though? Or how, how like?
They don't need to be super long. I mean, maybe ten feet wide. They're going to take up a parking stall.
See, they take up a whole.
Yeah, well, at least a half. But the, the goal with a park, with a bump out is that. Whatever the standard width of the crosswalk is, so the minimum width you could have, because you have to meet ADA, right? So you have to have sixty inches or whatever, forty eight inches, I think it's sixty inches on a sidewalk. You know, so it's got to be a minimum of five feet wide. You know, but it has to come out to the edge of the car, right? So if a car is parked on the side of the street and the parking stalls eight feet wide. They'll come out eight feet from, on both sides of the street, because we have street parking on both sides. So essentially all it leaves is the traffic lanes. So it, it reduces the amount of travel for a pedestrian to cross the street.
All right, I am going to just say this, I feel like I could talk about this for another hour, thirty minutes.
It's, it's a big subject, yes.
So I'm just going to say, why don't we move on to the next item and then maybe we could have this be its own dedicated item. Once, maybe get a little bit more information on. Timeline and that kind of stuff, and then maybe we could make this its own dedicated item at some point.
Yes, uh, most of, most of our issues are in downtown.
Yeah.
Everywhere else, we don't have a lot of. Challenges. I mean, we have street parking, but we're not going to have the same challenges we have down here.
Yep.
Um, so next item, Upper Pine Street revamp, um, something we could do internal. There's been a lot of comments about how do we make it more usable space? And, you know, one of the things that we came up with was, well, what if we took all, uh, you know. I'll blame this on Dennis, he's the one that came up with it. Take all the planners out. Repave that area on the top and then put picnic tables back in there and then, um. And kind of, and then change angled parking so we could gain, we think we can gain three parking stalls on the traveler's side. By changing that to angled, because that, there is enough footage there for us to do angled parking. And we can potentially do that on the, on the other side as well. Cause everybody talks about parking and we can do it, so we just have to properly measure how we could do angles. Um, instead of parallel parking. Um, so. You know, there's that idea, or could we actually move all of the traffic lanes to the cornerstone side and then make the other side parking only? Um, and then put bullards into where it can be closed off. You know? Or there's the option of making it one way on one side and no, no down access and leaving that site closed for. Events and stuff like that, or closable. So.
Okay.
I, well, I'm aware.
All right, let's move on to the next one.
All right, next one, um, the library, uh, stuck with the exterior to improve longevity. The north side, we're having some issues. Um, I feel like, I feel like this is a pretty important one for facilities. Um, that we need to look at. Um, the next one after that, remove ramps on curbs by Dunsmere Brewery and the area on Spruce. Um, increasing parking on the Dunsmere Brewery side. Um, there's, Spruce is a really, really wide street, but for some reason we have parallel parking on the, on the brewery side. And if we'd like to shift that to angled parking and kind of re redefine that street space. But all of that is ramped from previous usage. And so if you look at it, I mean, there's a, this, there's no curb, it just comes down to a ramp and it's all the way along. That whole side, and then it also was on Dunsmere Avenue side. So that was a project we thought of. Um, we want to improve, uh, resident privacy at Children's Park. By, uh, you know, improving some, adding some slats or some kind of privacy screening between. There and the neighbor fence, neighboring fences, um. Looking at improving the parking area by Chevron. Um, so. We own the area across from Chevron, right there by, um, before you get to, between the exit ramp and basically. Yaks, that kind of parking area where the bigger trucks pull in, we own all of that. And so we could improve that to increase parking there for Yaks as well and that area, because it gets pretty congested. Especially when we have big events, it does bleed all the way down there. Um, that's a fairly cheap project, we think we can do. Um, ADA improvements around stens at Siskiyou and Dunsmere Avenue. Um, improved drainage on the east side of Siskiyou Avenue between Apple and the overpass. We have some drainage issues on there where it's kind of. Gone into disrepair and it just needs to be rebuilt. Um. That's not a horribly expensive project. Um, improve the area by the bike path. Um, so one of the other things I had on the list earlier in the council meeting was areas that we have to. That are challenging, either we have to weed eat them or we have to, that are mow them or just vegetation management in that areas. Is kind of a pain in the butt for us and it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort for very little gain. And so if we could figure out a way to improve that and make it look nicer without having to mow the grass, that would be great. Um. Then, um. One of the ones we talked about was, uh, improving the crosswalks, yeah, by Hedge Creek. I'm sorry, I skipped over that one. Uh, in crosswalks and parking access for Hedge Creek Park. We do always have a speed issue there. I, we, I love your, we, we've talked about your elevated crosswalk there, that would be probably. High school kids will have fun with that one, I'm sure, but.
So at the crosswalk at Hedge Creek?
There is a crosswalk there, but we don't, it's not. It's, there's no way to slow anybody down, right? You know, and, and so it's. We have parking, you know, it's not like there's an intersection there, so, but. We do need to make sure that we meet the daylight requirements, but also we need to improve that area a little bit. Um. Chip seal multiple roads and improve quality. Um, so currently we have, I have about. Ninety thousand dollars in our funds, uh, associated with roads and road improvements. So about a ninety thousand dollar project would get us. Quite a few miles on, on some of the roads. We have a new PCI, which is, uh, pavement condition index, um, study coming out. That I'll should have here in the next month or so through the LTC. And that will give us an idea of where that we can gain some longevity on some of our roads. Um. We will have a few challenges there. We, I did, uh. Just yesterday negotiated with Caltrans, uh, we have some pretty significant road problems. From them transporting all of their equipment down to for the bridge construction. So we've also negotiated some of that, um, and we will do some negotiation with Union Pacific on rod and road. Improvements from Sacramento, on Sacramento Avenue all the way down to Bridge. So there's, there's some other stuff in the work that is outside of this, um, that could possibly be done by somebody else, but. That one, that one's a fairly reasonable project.
Hit him up for some help on the public works building while you're at it.
Yeah, I'll work on that. Um. From, from the park side, um, remove and replace the ball field fence, um, along the Dunsmere Avenue and the parking lot side. Um, it's starting to look really, really, really worn. Um, I'd like to reduce the height of it, because it, it feels. Uninviting, because it's like a six foot prison fence, um, all right up next to the sidewalk. And so we would like to look at a way to either improve that, uh, reduce the height. I, I kind of like that, the black chain link fence, you could just see right through it, you don't even know it's there after a time. It doesn't, you know, just something that it, it would be a big improvement for that area. Um. One of the other ones we talked about was adding an entrance arch and wrought iron fence, uh, around the cemetery. Or at the front of the cemetery, kind of improving that area, um. Clearing fence the new property of the airport, uh, two point six four acres that we brought forward to you guys that were in, uh, negotiations with the county on. Uh, rehabilitate the well for drinking water. If we get that accomplished this fiscal year, then we'll probably have that, we have the budget to rehabilitate that well this year. Um. But that's just something on there. Um, we would probably look at some future grant funding or, um. An EF, yeah, IFD, economic impact, something. District that could help improve the infrastructure up there. Um, improve the grandstands area. And then, um, a couple of the other ones I had on here, restroom at Tollandale Park, restroom at Hedge Creek Park. Um, three of them I forgot though, um, that I'm going to add to your list. Windows here in the council chambers, so we had originally quoted to do a window on the inside of these windows. Kind of like they did in the courthouse in Wyrica to help, um, with our heating. And, uh, and cooling, so this room doesn't, so and sound. And so, um, that's a project. Um, and then, uh, asbestos abatement downstairs, so we have. The lower floors of this building are not usable due to asbestos, so, um, we would like to look at that project. And then also air conditioning at the community center. Um, I know that was something we talked about and I just forgot that I had to add it on the list. And that, that should get us to two years.
Any questions or? Um. So I do have, I mean, I, this is a great list, um. Uh, a few things, um, I apologize for this. There's a few, uh, projects I would kind of like to see happen over the next two years, or at least get started working on them. Um, council member Brian and I sat down the other day and started discussing a few things. We didn't have any, we didn't get. Um, really far enough to bring anything or get you anything in time to put it on the agenda. Um, most of them, I think you're already kind of. Generally aware of, we've talked about them in the past, um. And a few of them might try to fit into this year and a few of them might try to fit into the two year budget. Um. One, obviously I've already kind of mentioned it, is the, uh, the raised crosswalks.
Yeah.
Uh, another one, I know I mentioned this to you, is putting up some string lights around the downtown area. Um, that's one I'd really like to see, maybe even if there's a way we could fit it in this budget year. Um, not necessarily in the next budget, not in the future budget, um.
What kind of lights?
String lights, kind of like.
Across, make it look fancy at night.
There's a new light ordinance I'll have to bring forward to you guys to read.
Okay.
On how we put streetlights in. I'll get that information.
Oh, yeah. Is it a state thing, city thing?
State, of course.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah. Dark skies, America, right?
And it probably exactly prohibits.
Sure it does. Basically, it's through the three hundred and sixty degree.
Yeah.
Only have a hundred and eighty pound.
All down lighting.
And yeah, like I said, moving forward on this particular idea, I'd love to see that, so that way I could see if it, it'd still work. Um, is that something I think would make the downtown? I think it's something that would be quick, cheap, easy and would drastically improve the looks of downtown. Um, at night, and I've seen a few other cities, um, and areas that have implemented them. Um. When you're at Cal Cities, there was a street on Long Beach that did it. Um, I saw it in Wenatchee, Washington, when I was up there for the Pacific North West Areas Association Conference last. Of this last spring, um, and they look really nice. I mean, just.
They do.
I remember when we put him in at the brewery ten years ago, about how much, how much nicer it looked. Um. That's something I'd like to see, um. And one thing I would really like to see in the budget, as long as, or especially if it were ever important, this is something. Um, when, uh, council member Brian and I sat down to discuss, that both is on. Both of our priorities list is, uh, and I know he's just jumping at the bit to jump in here and get this on there. Uh, is Monster Lake Falls.
Yeah.
And some way that we can try to move forward with that trail project. Um, I know, I know right now that us doing it ourselves is out of our budget or out of our conceivable budget.
We're in the process of applying for a grant.
Yeah.
So one thing I didn't include in here, so if we do have like active transportation plan. There's grant opportunities and so some of that stuff is not included in this list because. We don't always know what they are, right? And so we take those opportunities when they show up and we bring them forward, you know, at that time.
So one thing I would maybe like to add to this proposed goals section up above, in addition to seat grants for active transportation plan projects. I would really like, and this ties in with one of the main Cosmont goals, is to see a secret grants for outdoor recreation. Did you know, one thing that right now where Mount Shasta is kind of ahead of us is, I mean, I think. You know, just being in a canyon here, I'm sure someone who actually mountain bikes would come in and be like, no, you're wrong. Um, but I think we have incredible opportunity for mountain bike trails or hiking trails. I mean, I think it would be amazing if we could get a hiking trail up to Bradley, because there's the trail from the top of Bradley over to. Um, Castle Lake, if you could go from Dunsmere to Castle Lake, you know, that's a much more extreme heist than.
It's funny you say that, because we did talk about that actually, um, actually this week. Um, internally, I just didn't add it to the list.
Yeah.
Cause, because some of those, uh, you know, like the, the mountain biking, now they've done a really good development up in Mount Shasta. And part of their goal is to expand that network. And what I'd love to see is that network up here on the, on the hillside on this side. And then with a trail back up to Mount Shasta, so we could corner, kind of play off of that as well. As a more of a regional thing than just a Mount Shasta thing.
But we have such an, I mean, we have such an amazing natural area around here, I would just love to see us actually capitalize a bit on it, especially if we can. Like I said, so I would love to see, look for recreation, after recreation based grants, um, be added to the proposed goals list. And then, um, sometime soon, I'll be getting you a few more of those projects that, uh, we've been talking about. Once again, I apologize for not having that ready for this meeting. Um, Matthew, was there anything else that you wanted to add out of what, uh, you and I had discussed? Um, for next year's budget?
Uh, not at this point. I think you covered a, a few of the highlights. Uh, Dustin, thank you for putting together this list. It's, it's fairly extensive. Um, I, I do think, uh, as we develop the budget and look at the. Uh, monetary restraints on our ability to do things and our capacity, we may have to do some further prioritization. Uh, you know, in the next two years, but I think this is a great start. I'd also like to bring this back. With, uh, councilwoman Lucasey present, so she has an opportunity to weigh in.
Okay. So are you asking to table it?
Um, well, do you need? I'm happy to, uh, approve those priorities, but I, I think if we were to go through the exercise of. Um, ranking it maybe, so we could even just say, hey, in the half most important, you know.
So.
I, yeah, if we only got half done, which would be most important, or we could do it based on cost, we could do it a couple.
I have some, I have some ideas on that, because now that you kind of, you added a little bit to the goals, but, you know, I can, it's reasonable. Um, what I'll do is I can break it down by goal and then, you know. External, so part of the challenge I have is, you know, I got, I want to make sure we can utilize the skills of our internal staff. Um, and they need projects, you know, on occasion to, to fill time, like. Who knew it was going to be fifty degrees all of January, right? And so here we are, we're getting projects done that, you know, weren't expected to be done until May. And so we're kind of looking for similar projects. And so if we have a list and we know what we can do internally, we can save a lot of costs. Um, so what I'll do is I'll separate them out. Um, and bring it back, uh, probably at the next meeting, I'll separate it by, you know, internal versus external. Because external obviously will cost more and we'll have to go through a bidding process, whereas internal, we just need to buy materials. And so then we can kind of go from there and I'll kind of isolate them by the goals that are up top. Then we can kind of go from there and I'll kind of isolate them by the goals that are up top. And then I'll add some of the stuff associated with the other items in the agenda tonight into. I'll put some of that stuff into the goals, like reduce burdens of regulations. Well, how are we gonna do that? And then look at some of that stuff over here on the other side of things we've already had talked about.
Yeah, could we also incorporate the, the goals talked about with Cosmon? And that might be a little bit ongoing because you have a few meetings, but. July, we'll have an idea of the monetary things we want to do.
Yeah, I could put those as a sub-goal of improve downtown.
Perfect. And then I think you already said you'd integrate Mossbury at some level into this. Well, it'll be in the budget at some small level at least. Alright, thank you.
And then questions, comments? Anything to add? Alright, with that, I'm gonna open this up to public comment. And then I think we, we're verging on having full discussion there. So I'll open this up for public comment before we. Continue on with any lively discussion. Alright, with that, I'm opening it up to public comment. Three minutes, thirty seconds. Please limit all comment to this particular item. If you're on Zoom, go to the reactions tab and raise your hand. Seeing no one, I'm. Thank you.
We're gonna get an award for endurance.
Andrea Her, at forty seven forty Simpson. I think, you know, a lot of these sound really, really good and a lot of them would. Would contribute to the. Wellbeing of the, the city, you know, that you're also aiming at with the Cosmon. But I, one little one that I was gonna mention was. The restroom that Ton Dolly, I mean. I, that's a place where my husband and I love to walk and I think that would be nice to have that. We've had that in the past. I mean, temporary ones. I don't know what you're planning on. Putting in, but if those can be put in at places like that and, and was it Hedge Creek? I just, I, I haven't been to Hedge Creek in so long, but I always wonder with all those people and all those cars, you know, what the. If there are restroom facilities, so that would be wonderful. So thank you for all that good work.
Thank you.
You already heard my, what I filled in about the fact that Pine Street. Now with Travelers being sold, that's already. Gonna have the power at that end of the building.
Yeah, so, so that's because the plans have gone, like it's, we have to go back through the process. So we have to revise plans, so we do.
Came up during the planning commission, we actually asked them when they asked for the extension, whether they were just trying to sell that plan.
Yeah, well, that's ultimately what happened, but yes, sorry.
The other one I had a comment on is. Across from the brewery Spruce Street, planning commission is okay to. Restaurant to be put in there. I don't know what that couple paid, but I do know that they paid fifty thousand dollars for those plans. So they've already got an investment in that area too. So I think they should be. Involved with that redesigning there. Somebody that's come in here, bought a, bought land, bought the land next to it. Paid one stop fifty thousand dollars for the plans that they have planned on doing that. Whether that cover comes to reason or not, I would just be involved with let them know. Because that's, they've already got a major investment in our city.
Thank you. Alright, and Alan, are you? I think it's your turn.
Thank you. I just want to say you guys are doing an amazing job facilitating Dunsmere's revitalization and I just want to commend you guys for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
And unless there's anything else, I will close public comment on this item. Alright. Discussion wise, just kind of moving forward here. I feel like you're probably, was there action on this informational? Or no, that's, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page.
Wrong page. It's a information discussion.
And discussion, okay.
So it's really just staff, staff direction and then I can bring it back and. We can do a formal approval or, because I kind of felt like it was gonna be a back and forth and we were gonna forget things and you guys were gonna add things, so. Then I could bring it back.
One thing. Work well is kind of maybe as we. Where we're not in a, I have this. Just kind of, that kind of can come.
Go ahead and, and you know, like Councilmember Brian had. Said it's gonna, what I'll do is I'll break it down. A little better, excuse me. Break it down a little better on, you know, like where in the budget it's gonna fit, kind of an estimated cost, so we have an idea. So I think I'll bring it back probably at least twice before it comes to council for the, for. Inside the budget.
Yeah.
You know, component. So over this next, you know, next month, I'll be, we'll be working on the capital improvements plan. So we'll figure out what we can and can't fit in what we have for dollars available. And then, and how we can fit it and if we can maneuver all that around, then I.
And I've said this many times. I do not support paid parking in this town, except for at Hedge Creek Falls or wherever people are going to Mossbury Falls. So if, I know you have the. You know, parking area by Hedge Creek is potentially exploring what it would look like to. Do paid parking there of. Or going back to the point, can we put parking spaces going up Mont Road? On the street, you know, so basically put a speed limit sign to lower the speed.
Further up.
Basically where you enter city limits because that's quite a ways up the road.
Yeah, another two hundred and fifty, three hundred feet.
Something like that. Put parking spaces, number them all and then just put one of those parking meter things where, you know, the self pay ones that all have a. Thing, so that way we're, we could potentially be.
That we don't tell the out of towners that we're not gonna enforce, but they just pay it anyway because they're used to it.
We're Sergeant Ortiz, they need to go be enforcing that. But you know, you, you get where I'm going with that because that's like I said, if, if. Someone tried to come in and say we need paid parking in downtown.
Then we can advertise free parking in downtown. Look, parking is free and we're gonna go eat lunch here.
You know, as, as you're looking at that, you know, the, the parking access at Hedge Creek, maybe. Breakdown to just what it would be like to improve the parking and to what it would be like to put in some paid parking there. Yeah, I think, I think overall, I think all of us are really, pretty happy with this list, you know, all depending on. How the rest of the budget process goes and how everything else goes, but yeah, I'd say. Seems like we're all pretty. Pretty content, are pretty happy with where this is at right now, my list you put together, so.
One thing, oh, one thing I want to add to the projects that I forgot and it's been on my mind for a while, murals. Let's paint some of our walls.
That was another thing that was on Matthew and my list is seeing if we can maybe re. Make the, the one mural on the side of Dunsmere Hotel a little better. Murals throughout downtown. So that was another thing that was on both of our lists. I'm glad you brought that up.
Parking walls over here.
Yeah, I'd love to see a lot of these walls. I'd love to just see murals on everything throughout town. String lights and murals. Should we, anything else or should we move on to future agenda items? Alright, I'm gonna move us on to future agenda items, since I don't think we need to take any particular action on that one right now. Unless there's anything you'd like. The one thing in, I, I do have one thing that came up and Alan will be happy to hear this. I know we had talked about the marijuana ordinance update at a couple different times, specifically including a few of those things that. Aren't in there like the onsite consumption. And I know Juliana. That's something she has a lot of know, well. I can't, I can't remember if that was something she was wanting on there or something that she wanted. To wait until we had the new planners on for, I know she.
I think that was, the comment was, so we wait till the new planners.
The new planners are on board.
I can add it to her list, but I'll put it on here. We can do a presentation.
So now that they are on board, there's a few of those things like the onsite consumption that would be potentially good to look at. And potentially do, start looking into updating that ordinance. If that's what's determined that we should be, should do. So maybe just, I throw that on there. The other thing is, I feel like we're missing, we had. The last meetings last year, we had more on here.
We knocked it all out.
Okay. Okay.
You're right, we did. We had a list of like fifteen items and I hit it, the last three meetings have knocked it out. Alright, that's the advantage of having one, I'll, I'll say it. That's the advantage of having one meeting a month.
Alright, any other future agenda items? Nope. Okay, with that. All in favor, or I moved to adjourn the meeting, all in favor?
Thank you everyone.